Special meeting. Are there any final actions?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No final action tonight.
All right. We will now adjourn the City Council's special meeting and call to order the City Council meeting and special joint City Council Traffic Safety Committee meeting this Tuesday, June 13th. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members, Rorba?
Here.
Aquino?
Here.
Chalan Charla?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here. Let us all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda updates?
Yes, Madam Mayor. There is additional information for item six and also same for item 15 and a revised staff report for item 16, a copy of which have been provided to you previously. They are also available to the public on the table in the back. And I understand the mayor will also rearrange the agenda sequence after consent, which is after number 12, where item 13 will be called following consent, followed by 16, 15, and then 14.
Okay, thank you. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is scheduled presentations. Proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom. Oh, Business from the Floor.
All right. Business from the Floor is the public's opportunity to address a city council concerning any item within the city council's jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. Please keep in mind that the city council is generally prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item that is not on the agenda. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. There is a speaker timer on the podium in front of you that will display the time you have remaining of your three minutes. The color will change to yellow when you have 30 seconds and turn to red and blink when your three minutes are completed. We ask that everyone respect the three-minute limit to ensure that all speakers have an equal opportunity to address the city council. Will the clerk please call the first?
The first speaker is Loretta Hedinger, followed by Ricky Jones, and then Mike Gruenberg.
Good evening, Loretta.
Hello to all of you. You know the old saying about if you don't know history, you're condemned to repeat it. So tonight, I want to give you a bit of a history lesson. In the name of economic development, when Folsom was the second worst poverty pocket in Sacramento County, Jack Kip moved the Central Business District to East Bidwell Street and was ready to let Sutter Street fade into oblivion. Bud Davies and others wheeled little money out of him to build a median and shed roofs over the sidewalks and thereby saved Sutter Street. Further, the city established Sutter Street as the second historic district in the state and found the money even then to establish and support the Historical Committee, as the Historic District Commission was called then. To Jack's credit, he learned from their success and in his later years became a vocal proponent of Folsom's history. You're poised to repeat history. In the name of economic development, you're where Jack Kip was, ready to let the Historic District fade by devoting all resources elsewhere. Again, citizens are pleading for support of Folsom's incredible history. Will you listen like Jack did? Without the minor, though seeming major at the time, infusion of a little capital into the Historic District in Jack Kip's day, Folsom would not today be reaping the sales tax and property tax benefits of a thriving Historic District. The subsequent infusions of staff expertise and infrastructure updates have caused the high level of tax value the Historic District now represents. Bud Davies and others were able to convince Jack to devote a minor, though seeming major at the time, investment into the Historic District. The citizens were right about the importance of Folsom's history and were able to convince Jack. What will it take to convince you to hire someone who knows what they're doing in regard to historic properties? As I've mentioned to you before, you devote $10 million to parks and rec salaries, not counting the temps, and can't find money for one staff person for the Historic District. It's a drop in the bucket. How many more missteps, appeals, and lawsuits will it take to convince you that you're taking the work of previous councils for granted, that the current prosperity of the Historic District is yours to lose, one mistake at a time? If you need an example of how costly a laissez-faire approach becomes, just examine the budget for the East Bidwell Central Business District planning effort, undoubtedly to be followed by significant capital expenditures. Sorry, expenditures. The city focused its resources on new development and now has to play catch-up. As we approach build-out, we will need to shift gears to manage a developed city. Providing expertise for the Historic District can provide a template for the time.
Loretta, your time is five seconds.
One sentence. When managing new development is no longer the main focus of Folsom's government, what is your vision for that time? It's right on the horizon.
Thank you, Loretta.
Next speaker.
Will the clerk please call the next speaker?
The next speaker is Ricky Jones, followed by Mike Gruenberg.
Good evening, Officer Jones.
Good evening. I'd like to yield remainder of my time to Michael Gruenberg.
Okay. Good evening, Sergeant.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I stand before you today as both a member and representative of the Folsom Police Officers' Association to address the statements made by Mayor Rodriguez during the last city council meeting regarding the issues of unhoused individuals living in Folsom. The mayor stated, and I quote, "Homelessness is not up," and claimed that compared to other cities, Folsom's problem is incredibly miniscule. As someone who values statistics, it is important to bring forth the facts and challenges of these statements. You have all received the stats by now. Stats have indeed spoken, and they prove that your claims are inaccurate. The issue of homelessness in Folsom is not only real, but has also been growing. Stats gathered by the Folsom Police Department provide evidence of increasing numbers of individuals experiencing homelessness in our community. The stats cannot be ignored nor dismissed. Moreover, labeling the homeless problem as miniscule is an opinion based on perception rather than reality. As a person who personally interacts with unhoused individuals directly or addresses other complaints or problems as a result of their actions for 160 hours a month, I can attest the problem is anything but miniscule. It's a bold to formulate such a statement after merely a four-hour ride-along over three months ago with one sergeant and one officer assigned to the Community Crime Suppression Unit. The dedicated team of two worked tirelessly to combat this problem despite being understaffed and misquoted. Together, they witnessed firsthand the challenges faced by both the citizens and the police department. Recently, I spoke with the owner of Folsom Lake CrossFit. He often has to report unhoused and transient activity in front of and behind his business. I asked him, as a business owner in the city of Folsom, if he believed the homeless problem was miniscule and/or impacting his business. Kevin immediately chuckled out loud and stated, I quote, "I'm currently pursuing moving my business out of the city because of that exact reason." While I appreciate the praise you have given the police department for their accomplishments, it's disheartening to hear comments and misquotes that downplay the severity of this issue. It undermines the effort of the Community Crime Suppression Unit, the police department, and the struggles faced by our community members. We need a united front to tackle this problem effectively, and that begins with acknowledging its magnitude and working together to find sustainable solutions. Mayor, I ask you to reconsider your stance on this matter. For years now, the two most common complaints to the police department have been traffic and homelessness. As officials elected by the citizens of Folsom to serve the citizens of Folsom, many of you have refused to listen. More now than ever, the community as well as police department have been voicing their frustrations just to fall on deaf ears. And to be quite frank, it is unacceptable for the city council to continue to operate in this unrealistic reality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sergeant Gruenberg. So we cannot engage in the conversation, but I will share a little more at council comments. Will the clerk please call the next speaker?
One more speaker for Business from the Floor, Doug Scully.
Good evening, Doug.
Hello, council members and city manager. I'm here tonight to express my feelings in regards to the homeless issue from a personal level and from a professional level. I run and operate Bidwell Studios, and I've tried to house as many homeless for Folsom as I can. So I think most of you know that. So basically, what I'm here for is to support law enforcement. I've been a reserve for almost 29 years, and I worked a shift. Last week or two weeks ago, it was the first time I almost wanted to hang up my badge and say enough. Every call I went on was a homeless call. I was confronted and almost got into a fight. People down in the Historic District, they were all over the place. It was definitely a crazy night, but I'm seeing this happen more and more. And I'm not here representing law enforcement, I'm here as a community member. But that night in particular, and it's been going on for a long time, the continuation of the issues going on, it's not about homelessness, it's not about, you know, whatever you want to put on it, homeless, mental health, transient, whatever you want to state it is. But they're coming into town, the ones that need homes are trying to get them. There are a lot of good people out there, but there are a lot of people that come into this town and wreak havoc. Every time that I work with law enforcement here, I like to back them up. I like to be, I appreciate being a partner with them. But, you know, I transport people to jail, takes me a minimum of four hours generally when I go down to county jail. A lot of times, it's more than that. It's very difficult for these guys, and I'm only working just once in a while. So these guys are out there every day. They need support, they need more manpower, the special units team needs more people. I live in the Historic District, I see it, it's all around my house, I hear it at night, I can't get sleep, and I don't want to call law enforcement every time there's a little issue because it's not worth it for them to have to come out every time when they're already impacted. So I'm here to support the men and women of law enforcement at Folsom PD. They're a great group of people. I've been working with them for a long time, and I appreciate all of them. So I just hope that people really wake up. And look, there's people coming into this town that are causing problems within our community that shouldn't have the ability to do that. And it's causing more and more issue as we go along each and every day. It's getting worse, and I think that we need to wake up to it and really just figure out what we need to do. It's time that we really focus on this issue. When our guys and women are taken out of line for the community to deal with these guys out there in the streets causing problems each and every day, it's not a good situation. It's not a good situation. And so I just hope that we really stop and listen to what Mike has to say and listen to what we need to do as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I don't have the permission to elaborate and explain things, but I will do that at council comments. All right. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item, scheduled presentations. Proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom, proclaiming July 1st through 3rd, 2023 as Western Rodeo Days in the City of Folsom.
Okay, there we go. All right. So Chris, you're receiving this for the rodeo. All right. So the proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming July 1st through 3rd as Western Rodeo Days in the City of Folsom. Whereas the City of Folsom proudly recognizes Folsom's Western heritage and acknowledges the benefits of preserving the traditions and customs of the city's history. And whereas the annual Folsom Pro Rodeo is a cornerstone of Folsom's link to its colorful past, and it's thoroughly enjoyed by residents and visitors alike. This year's event will be held on July 1st through 3rd. At the Dan Russell Arena marks the 62nd Annual of the Folsom Pro Rodeo and marks it as one of the longest-running events in Northern California. And Chris Keibels, Folsom's very own ticket queen and proud rodeo volunteer since 1980, will serve as the 2023 Folsom Pro Rodeo Grand Marshall. And as the 62nd anniversary event highlights includes traditional rodeo events such as saddle and backbone bronc riding, steer wrestling, team roping, barrel racing, bull riding, and performance by the painted ladies drill team, flying cowboys, motocross, rodeo clowns, nightly fireworks, mutton bustin', my favorite, and live music in the saloon Under the Stars. And whereas in honor of the traditional patriot theme, the Folsom Pro Rodeo will celebrate with the ever-popular in arena spectacular fireworks. Celebrating the 62nd anniversary of the Folsom Pro Rodeo involves the assistance of hundreds of volunteers and a tremendous amount of community support. Now therefore, I, the Mayor Rosario Rodriguez for the City of Folsom, do hereby proclaim July 1st through 3rd as the Western Rodeo Days in Folsom and call upon all the citizens to cowboy up and join the festivities celebrating the 62nd Annual Anniversary of the Folsom Pro Rodeo. It is further proclaimed that the City of Folsom Council extends sincere best wishes to the choose Folsom team for a successful rodeo season proclaimed on this 13th day of June. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Well, I don't have a lot to add to this, but I'll see you all at the rodeo.
Thank you very much for the goodies. All right. All right. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is the Consent Calendar.
Okay.
I'll pull item number 12, Mayor.
Number 12, all right. Any of us want to pull an item from consent?
No, but I'll move adoption of two through 11.
Oh, sorry, hold on. Somebody has requested. We have a speaker on number six. Okay.
I'll move adoption of two through five and seven through 11.
I'll second.
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members, Rorba?
Aye.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalan Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yee-haw!
Rodriguez.
Yes. All right. So item number six, we have a speaker?
Yes. Two speakers. Oh, no, one speaker, sorry. Teri Sorenson.
Good evening, Teri.
Good evening. My point on this would be quite simple, I think. I tried to look up and see the staff reports and things were online about this particular item, and I couldn't find anything. I think we need more time, the citizenry needs more time to look at this particular item and see, you know, what the basis was for deciding to go ahead and grant this consultant and professional services agreement and what this company, RRM, Zine Group, actually submitted. Because I don't see how the city council could really make this decision unless they have information that's not available to the public. And as far as I know, that information hasn't been made available. So that would be my only point. I don't think we're quite ready to go forward on this, but if the council believes, if they have enough information, that's fine.
Mr. Sorenson, were you not able to locate the staff report in the council packet that is online? Or is the packet not to your liking?
Well, the packet referred to documents that weren't in the packet. I mean, it showed the process that there were six people on staff, and they went through, and they gave numbers, but you couldn't see what they were considering.
Mr. Sorenson, if I could, additional information has actually been provided to the city council since the agenda was posted, and it's in the form of an additional information package that I think should be available on the side table, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Yeah, and it does include a full copy of the proposal and additional information for their consideration. So you're free to look at it as well.
I can't read it and consider it right now. If the council feels they're going to go ahead, that's fine. I don't think sufficient information was provided to the public in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Well, I will entertain a motion for item number six.
I'll move adoption of Resolution 11046.
I'll second.
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members, Rorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalan Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes. Okay. Will the clerk call the next item, please?
Oh, good.
Number 12.
I'll wait.
Next item is Consent Calendar, item number 12, Resolution Number 11052, Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction agreement with RBH Construction for the Community Development Department, permit, counting, and project and appropriation of funds.
Okay. I can?
I'm just looking for the mayor, so I want to make sure. This is just a comment, not many questions here. I know there is only one bidder responded for this proposal, but before, there were three bidders responded. I just want to give some background and also set my, you know, opinion also on this procurement or this kind of procurement process. Before, there was three bidders responded, but the scope and the dollar amount is far exceeding, and our department went back to the rebidding and the process of that one. We only got one bidder to respond for that RFO, which is costing around $334,000. But my point is, yes, we are in a time crunch here. I was talking to the Community Service Director. I'm okay to move ahead with this one, but in general, one bidder responding and making the decision on the dollars, not knowing what is the best value, is not the right approach. So I know I did this before also once, I just want to reiterate. Hopefully, going forward, we will at least look for more than one bidder to propose and assess what is the best value and come to the city council.
All right. I wanted to turn it over.
That's all I did. I'm going to make the motion to approve this item number 12.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll? Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Council members, Rorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalan Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is Public Hearing, item 13, Resolution Number 11041, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom declaring the results of the majority protest proceedings in renewing the Historic Folsom Property and Business Improvement District, approving the assessment formula and levying the assessments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Stephen Wong, your city attorney, this item is made at the request of the Folsom Historic District Association, which is in the process of renewing the Historic Folsom Property and Business Improvement District, also known as the Historic Folsom P-Bid. I would like to introduce Emily Brown, Consultant for the Folsom Historic District Association, who will provide information on the P-Bid and the renewal process. Emily?
Thank you, Mayor and council members.
Welcome, Emily.
Hi.
Pull up the presentation. Perfect. Thank you again. My name is Emily Brown. I'm a project manager with Civitas, and we're a legal and consulting firm specializing in improvement districts. We had the pleasure of helping the Historic Folsom Property Business Improvement District form back in 2008 and again to renew in 2013 when the initial term expired. After 15 very successful years, property owners would now like to renew the district for another 10-year term. So I've been working with the FHDA the past year to help guide them through that process. And tonight, I'll give some background on P-Bids and explain the renewal process, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. So first, what is a P-Bid or a Property and Business Improvement District? So P-Bids are special assessment districts that provide a stable funding source for property owners to provide services to their commercial corridor above and beyond the services local government provides. There are over 200 P-Bids in California and over 2,500 in North America. With the services the P-Bid is able to provide, property owners are able to make their districts cleaner, safer, and more vibrant, which attracts customers, businesses, and ultimately increases property values and tax revenues. So how does a P-Bid work? P-Bids are very much property owner-driven. To form and renew, property owners decide on an assessment rate and services, and the district can only pass if a majority of property owners are supportive. So essentially, it's a self-assessment, but it's just collected by the county in two parts each year on each property tax bill. The county then sends the funds to the nonprofit corporation that manages the P-Bid, also called the Owners Association, which in this case is the Folsom Historic District Association. It is an assessment, not a tax, so the funds cannot be diverted for other purposes. They are required by law to go directly to the Owners Association, and the funds must be used to directly benefit the property owners paying the assessment. So the Historic Folsom P-Bid was formed in 2008 for an initial term of five years, which is the maximum term length for a formation. After the initial term, districts may then be renewed up to 10 years, which is what we did in 2013. And now the current district is set to expire at the end of this year. If renewed, the district would generate approximately $170,000 in assessment revenue on an annual basis for improvements and activities that are above and beyond those provided by the city and other government agencies. The services decided upon by property owners in Historic Folsom, which the district has benefited from from the past 15 years, include advocacy and program coordination, image enhancement and marketing, and enhanced maintenance. And moving on to the steps to renewal. Again, P-Bids are very much property owner-driven in that the district only passes if there's a majority in support. So a crucial step to renewing the P-Bid is outreach to property owners, getting feedback on the past 10 years and what property owners would like to see moving forward, educating property owners on the process, and reaching consensus on the parameters of the district moving forward. Since first initiating this process last June, FHDA has led the ongoing outreach and education process through newsletters, community meetings, and one-on-one stakeholder meetings. Once consensus is reached, we then draft what's called a Management District Plan, or MDP, which is essentially the constitution of the district, and it outlines all of the parameters, including the boundaries, which services will be provided, how much of the budget will be allocated to each service category, the assessment rate, assessment methodology, the length of the district, and the governance. Once we have a finalized Management District Plan, we then take that plan to all of the individual property owners, and we begin to collect petitions in support of the district. In order to move on to the final step of the process, the hearing and balloting process, P-Bid law requires over 50% of petitions signed in support, weighted by how much each owner will pay in assessment. For example, if the total assessment amount for the district was $100,000 and a property owner paying $10,000 in assessment, their vote would be equal to 10%. In this case, the City of Folsom owns properties representing just about 48% of the assessments. So for the petition drive, FHDA did the same process that we did for the formation in 2008 and the renewal in 2013, which was to collect over 50% of the weighted private ownership vote first. And then on March 28th, we came to And then, on March 28th, we came to Folsom City Council, who then unanimously adopted a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the petition and ballot on behalf of the City of Folsom. This gave us an overall weighted total of 78% support. So finally, with the 50% threshold far exceeded, city council unanimously adopted a resolution of intention to renew the district on April 11th. This officially allowed us to begin the balloting process. Prop 218 then requires that ballots are mailed to all property owners in the district along with notice of the public hearing, which is set to occur at least 45 days after ballots are sent out. And that is what we have scheduled tonight. And so tonight, council will conduct a public hearing, hear public testimony, and receive ballots for the proposed Historic Folsom Property and Business Improvement District. If a majority of the ballots are in favor, also weighted by assessment amount, then council may consider approving the resolution, declaring the results of the majority protest proceedings, renewing the Historic Folsom P-Bid, approving the assessment formula, and levying the assessments. So this is just a quick summary of the process that we've gone through to get here today. As I mentioned, we had the petition drive where we collected petitions from supportive property owners. That included the city's petition and ballot. We had the first hearing here at city council where council adopted the resolution of intention to renew. Then we mailed ballots and notices to all property owners within the district. And tonight, we're here for the public hearing and to tally the ballots and for requesting the adoption of resolution of formation.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, so we will.
Mayor, can you open the public hearing?
Yes. So we will now open the public hearing. This is a date and time for the public hearing on the proposed Historic District Property and Business Improvement District. Notice of this public hearing was provided by mailing to affected property owners as required by law. Ballots must be submitted by the close of this public hearing. All right, do we have any requests to speak?
We have no requests to speak.
Okay, this is the final call for any ballots to be submitted to the clerk? None, okay. Okay, we will now close the public hearing.
If we could ask you to approach the podium because we need to get everyone on the microphone. Thank you.
I'm just unclear, were ballots mailed to everyone in the historic district or just the businesses on Sutter Street?
Just the property owners, correct?
Property owners on Sutter Street?
Emily, do you want to take that?
Because I'm a property owner in the historic district and I don't recall getting a ballot.
So ballots were sent to all property owners within the district boundaries?
That's what I.
And I have a map here of the boundaries. It's sent to the.
Can you speak up?
Emily, if you could approach the microphone, please, thank you.
So ballots were sent to all property owners within the district boundaries and I do have a copy of the map here.
Not the historic district.
Commercial property. That's what I'm wondering, is it commercial or homeowners?
The commercial part of the district.
It's all property owners within the Historic Folsom Property Business Improvement District.
And, okay, so that's what I, so it's not just the historic district, it's a smaller district within the historic district?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Okay, so we will now have the assistant city clerk will now tally the ballots and the council will continue the final action of this item until the ballot canvas is completed.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this point. Let's see, what is that?
Do you want to go?
Oh, yes, so just one quick note, the public is welcome to join in this meeting and observe the counting of the ballots. And then we will resume after. All right, so we will now continue with the city council items and then return back to this item after.
And Madam Mayor, if I would, if I could assist, the next item would be item 16, which is old business?
Correct. Okay, will the clerk please call the next item?
We're moving some items around tonight, so the next item is old business item 16, Resolution Number 11044, A Resolution Authorizing the Formation of the River District Master Plan Citizens Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Robert.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you tonight, Resolution Number 11044, is a resolution authorizing the formation of the River District Master Plan Citizens Advisory Committee. And I wanted to just provide a little background on that, just for the community, on how these things are formed. The Folsom Charter, Section 2.04G, duties of the mayor allows for the formation of an ad hoc committee and that's essentially what we are doing or proposing this evening. The municipal goes on to say that there's a one-seat limitation with some exceptions. And the exceptions are that you may hold, as an appointed commissioner in another body, say a planning commissioner or a partner commissioner, historic district commissioner, you may hold a seat on an ad hoc committee. So just for clarifications that, some of the rules that are in our municipal documents for how this happens. In your staff report, there are 17 stakeholder organizations identified within the proposed River District Master Plan area. In that 17 stakeholder list are six categories. Landowners, cultural resources, recreation resources, open space resources, the historic district, and economic development. Staff is recommending that you select up to two from each of those six categories, which would give you a stakeholder group of 12. You are free to make adjustments as you see fit, that's just your staff recommendation. The second part of your appointments this evening are for at-large membership on the advisory committee. The, there are 11 individuals that have expressed interest in serving on this advisory committee. Those are in your staff report. And we would ask that the council each appoint one person to serve on the advisory committee for the River District. The River District Master Plan process is expected to last a year or maybe a little bit more. One of the other rules for ad hoc committees is that they are appointed for a maximum of one year. Your resolution states that this committee would be formed officially and effective July 15th of next month and would be in effect until July 15th of 2024. I think that's adequate time based on the schedule that we have from our consultant on this. We do anticipate a minimum of eight meetings of the committee, so this is not something that is, it's not quite monthly, but it is a regularly scheduled occurrence throughout the project process. And it is kind of the backbone of our civic engagement plan for the project. There will be other opportunities for the public to engage. There'll be open houses, there will be a digital and geographic centric system for people to engage online, among other things. So this is just one of those great opportunities to tap into experience and expertise within our community and use that on a regular basis through the planning process. With that, we do have a selection or balloting process for you that Madam Clerk will assist with and I think Pam or me. But again, just to recap, we're recommending that you select two from each of the six categories on the stakeholder organizations and then one each for the at-large appointments.
City attorney, would, do we want to take public comments first?
You can if you want to. This is all business, not public hearing, but you can if you want to.
Okay, great. Pam, let us do the public comments first, that we get feedback from the public on this?
Perfect.
Okay. All right, will the clerk, will the clerk call the first speaker?
First speaker is Claudia Cummings, followed by Teri Sorensen.
Good evening, Claudia.
Good evening, Mayor and council and staff and Robert. He is one of our members. And I'm here on behalf, I am Claudia Cummings, on behalf of the River District Organizing Committee. And we have been a group meeting for, since 2018. We were originally put together by the Tourism and Economic from the Folsom Chamber of Commerce Group. It's been my pleasure to travel to six cities with this group, kind of out of pocket, if you will, to see what other people have done with their waterfronts, rivers, lakes that run through their communities. And we went to Seattle, we went to Greensboro, we went to, my favorite, Bend, Oregon, and let's see, Boise, Idaho. In the process, we were able to really get our hands and heads around some of the things that really have worked on these particular waterfronts. And we're hoping that you will recognize the hard work that our group has put in on this and find us a seat at the table. That's really why I'm here tonight. I don't need to go into all of our accolades, but I do, I think, have quite a few of our members here if they'd like to take a bow from working all these years. Oh, they're too shy. Candy, Will, Rita. Anyway, it's been a work of love, really. We've got this jewel, as you all know. I almost hate to use the word district because it seems sort of inclusive, where really our river is all of ours. And I want us all to be visionaries and all take a part of it and be, I mean, this community, you heard me the other night talk about our history, it was built by visionaries. And that's really what we want to see on this committee, our visionaries. And I think our group is the shining star. So that's basically why I'm here, to really consider us to be on this group. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Will the clerk please call the next speaker?
Next and last speaker that I have is Teri Sorensen.
Thank you, I'm back. Teri Sorensen, I'm a resident of Folsom. I'm here on behalf of Deborah Grassel, who is the president of the Friends of Folsom Preservation. Deborah can't be here, she's taking a well-deserved vacation and mainly a vacation from working for the city. I don't think there's anybody that works as hard as Deborah works for the city on unpaid, on unpaid status. It's incredible. I work with her on Friends of Folsom Preservation. And I keep telling her, I said, she says, "Well, thanks to her for the work you do." I said, "I don't do any work compared to you, Deborah." This lady is there day in, day out, working five, six, seven, eight hours, five days a week at a minimum, working for the city. If there's anyone that deserves to be on this committee and anyone that's going to be really helpful and work their, pardon my expression, work their fanny off, it's Deborah Grassel. I hope you consider her strongly for a position. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
So I think these are the same ballots the council has in front of them and as the clerk reads through, I'll tally so that members of the public can see how those votes are added up.
So this brings, is this a good opportunity for discussion? Before we do the ballots?
Yeah.
Just a couple of things. One, on the Historic Folsom, sorry, the Sutter Street Merchant Association. Right now, it also, it's the Folsom Historic District Association. Right now, the name Karen Holmes is, now, I appreciate Karen and what she's done. I would love to see an actual business owner of, someone in the historic district represent FHDA. I can think of several business owners on the block that would bring, you know, very similar, like innovation, people that are really currently very actively involved. So can we leave that, can we, if we select someone from FHDA, can it be, can we just say that it is an actual active business owner in the historic district?
If I may, Madam Mayor. So in order to select members for this ad hoc committee, we have to select individuals. We have to make sure we know who is going to be a part of this committee and who's going to attend. So it would be wise for you to share those candidates' names with the council so that they can decide whether to go with those candidates or go with Ms. Holmes. Those names listed in the agenda are merely suggestions. The council has all the authority to appoint whoever the council wishes to appoint.
Okay. Yeah, I think, yeah, it's hard now because I don't, I mean, I can think of names, but I don't, I have not asked them, I don't know what their commitments are outside of here, so it's, okay.
Mayor, go ahead. Mayor, I think I have a slightly different approach for what you're making recommendation. I agree with your approach that the person should be a current business owner in historic district. Karen has a history about Folsom, that's number one. And number two, if I'm not wrong, that organization voted Karen be the representative. If I'm not wrong, I just want to make sure, she's on the board and they all think Karen is their representation. She may not be there today, but she is the voice for that community. And likewise, I see so many other groups, I don't think so, they're all living in Folsom. So to the best interest of, you know, the group, it is the knowledge they're going to bring based on their various activities that are involved in and around Folsom. Mr. Gus?
That is indeed correct. Not all of the stakeholder representatives are Folsom residents because of what you just said, that the groups have interests that expand beyond that. But in this, the case of the River District, they very well, or they much do have an interest in the River District. So they select a person to represent the organization.
Right. If it is an individual, then I probably definitely agree with you. But Karen is an organization there, so that's my point.
Sure, just, I think, you know, Karen has been, and I can't remember exactly, December of 2021, maybe? I think she sold her business, so she's been away as a, as a business owner from the historic district for about a year and a half. Jim, can you, is that true? Oh, yes, please, do you want to, can you?
As we're coming up, I'll give my input as well.
But I don't deny that Karen, I think, historically has, has a long history in the historic district. But when we look at FHDA, it really is a business, you know, business owners. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so our executive board did nominate Karen just because she has the history. She has a great passion, she has the time availability. She still serves our shuttle committee, we have regular meetings on that. And she's just been very active. She actually was super involved when we had the Amgen Tour. She got in there and did just incredible amount of work. So we like that she's, she's still engaged and she has that extra time that she can put her full effort to it because she's not running her business. But she, she definitely has a passion for the district and I think she would represent our district very well. So that's, we did.
All right, that might be a good time to start developing new business owners on the block to engage in FHDA.
Absolutely, and we try, we do try and get new, new people. A lot of people just can't commit, but anyways, so.
All right.
Yeah.
So I want to give, oh, sorry.
She's representing, still representing Karen's as their, she's a representative for them, but not the business owner. So we do have other representatives from businesses that aren't the owner that can be there representing. So we just have to have a majority of property owners on our board.
Okay.
Which we do.
So thank you, Jim. I want to ditto what YK said, I tried your last name in my head, it didn't go well. I think, you know, if this is who the FHDA voted for and recommended, it's not our job to tell them how to run their board. So I think, you know, I think we should just leave her name on the ballot and, and see how. So I think, you know, I think we should just leave her name on the ballot and, and see how it goes.
I will accept it, but it is something that I think it's time to start looking at. Like, I mean, there are, I don't know, 100 business owners on the block, and I'm sure reaching out to them for, to getting them involved, start developing the new, you know, the newer business owners. All right. What was the other one? Okay, I'm good.
Mr. Goss, I know, it's very hard to pick two from each group. Sometimes it's easy when you only get two.
One or all would be even easier.
I know, I know. I know, I may have to ask my colleagues also, you know, some of them, they have, you know, so many great people, whether, you know, we can talk and pick, is it restricted for 14, Pam?
Well, a little bit of the background on the, on the thinking of this. It, we are, Pam and I are both of the same mindset that broad diversity in experience, interests, opinions is going to lead to a better committee and a better project. So that's why you see so many, you know, varied interests on this. But in order to hear, to have a voice in this, there does really need to be a finite number. It can't be all. That's just, it, it's not workable to make sure everybody is engaged and gets the points across, and dominant personalities overshadow, you know, lesser ones. And, and it'll be my role to help make sure that all voices, you know, get heard in this. So I, I think that best practices indicate that 14 is probably the magic, you know, maximum. But I think what we've got here is appropriate. That's your staff recommendation. Thank you.
Robert, let me ask you a question. The River District Organizing Committee met for about almost four years, did three big, huge public outreaches where a couple hundred people showed up. I went to two of the three. Is there a reason just why one person was selected from that group?
Again, it's the group nominated the person they, they would like to represent them.
No, 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 is there, but, oh, so they only wanted to send one person?
I guess I didn't give them an option. It was, it was one person per each group was, was the, was the approach.
Is there room to add an extra person from the River District Organizing Committee right now?
Well, it, forming the ad hoc committee is entirely within the authority of the city council. So I will work with what you see as the best fit.
So if you select 12, what we've suggested is a maximum of 12 representatives from stakeholder groups and five at-large members in response to your comments last time. So that would be a total of 17 members. And best practices are eight to 14. So this is already a little more than, you know, what, what they consider to be kind of the best working situation with, with committees. So it's, it's up to the council if you want to add. It just makes the ad hoc committee work a little bit harder.
Sure. I, I'm a little, you know, for the River District Organizing Committee, just because it was a group, and I'm just going to guesstimate, it was about maybe eight or 10 people that met regularly, that really did a lot of the background, that did a lot of, I think, you know, just keeping it on the forefront of conversations. I personally, I would, I would, I don't know, you know, I think, Will, were you one of the? I mean, I would love to see another person from this group on this committee, but I don't know if there's somebody here that's not listed in here that would want to be on it.
So two out of the three people in the Economic Development Corporation were on the River District Organizing Committee, correct?
Yeah.
Will and Joe.
But there were like several others. But, okay, well, I mean, it's, if there's no one here that would want to be on it that was on that committee, I'm, I'm good to go. But if there's someone, oh, Claudia, you would like to be on it? I would like to make a recommendation that we add one more person from that committee because this is what I remember. And I attended several meetings when they had them. They were very engaged, they were very passionate, they, there was a lot of conversation. I think it even came before us for, I don't know, it was during some of the funding that, that, they're just, just conversations on it. I would have really loved to see an additional person from the River District Organizing Committee. And if Claudia Cummings is willing to be on it, can we make that, can we make that addition today? Right now?
Subject to your colleagues, yes.
Is that something that this council will, will consider? Is adding Claudia Cummings to this group? Just because of the background and the legwork they did? And the, they, they met, was it monthly? Monthly for four, five years?
I would support Claudia.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Mr. Goss, it's the voting members, and if Mr. Kempton wants to bring one or two alongside, that's okay to the discussions, right?
If people bring guests to the meetings?
Yeah, from their group.
I think that's fine. I think that the, there will be times where we will, we will ask for formal recommendations.
That's right.
And at that point, the people that the council appoints to this, they will be the voting members. If somebody wants to come and listen, I, I don't have a problem with that.
The meetings are open to the public.
Right. And it'll be subject to the confines of the space that we meet, but yeah.
We can, it's, oh, it's open for public as well, okay. No, I like Claudia, it's not, nothing wrong on it. But I just want to, you know, make sure the process is, yes, it is open for public. People can join. If it's lunchtime, then we may have to order a little bit more pizzas, you know, with the expense of the, some donor, not city. So anyway, I just want to make that, you know, they can come. It is not, but when the, when the voting goes, and you know, what is that recommendation proposal based on this, that, then you need a count to make that motion passed, or recommendation passed. Okay, thank you. Well, I let, you know, my colleagues, I, I do agree that they have invested already several years on this one. I, I truly agree on that. Sometimes, you know, giving them a voice at the table. But I'm talking in general, there are so many other groups here, not just the River District. That's why I'm making that comment.
Okay.
So I have a question also. So for some of the stakeholders, I, I know we talked about Karen Holmes, but, so for example, Dawn Rose is not a Folsom resident on behalf of Full Fan, but Crystal Tobias applied as an at-large, you know, a district representative. She's also a Full Fan. Are you a Folsom resident, Crystal?
I am. I live in historic district on Archway, and I'm a co-founder of Full Fan.
Lisa Horton, do we know if she's a Folsom resident, Lake Natoma paddlers?
She is.
She is?
Well, if we're talking about Folsom residents, and just as a clarification, Karen Holmes does not live in Folsom. That's FYI. And I don't want it to sound like I don't like Karen. I just, I just, I'm really, I just have this, this really bias for people that are invested into our community that have, you know, especially for business owners, we have bottom lines that are tied to this. So that was my only purpose of mentioning that. Okay.
I know on the cultural resources, I know, I want to recommend three people there, but I don't know how our, you know, it's going to grow. Friends of Folsom Preservations, Debra and Folsom History, Rita and Heritage Preservation, they're all there and directly impacted, whatever the recommendation we as a River District team is making.
Do you want to go to the voting?
Well, and I would like to make one comment to the Vice Mayor's comments under cultural resources. It may seem, it may seem somewhat out of place that the Shingle Springs Band of Miwok Indians is listed here, but this came about through some staff discussion as well as consultation with state parks, where they asked whether it would be appropriate to include them, and we felt that it was indeed. For the record, Crystal Marino is not a Folsom resident, but she has been selected by the Miwok Indians to represent their group. And there are significant and substantial Native American resources in the River District that we need to pay attention to. Hmm, got it.
So are, are you ready to vote?
So, yeah, I think if, if you want to select more than two in each category, we need agreement from you so that we can change the ballot. Otherwise, it seems challenging to have some people voting for more than two in any one category, right?
That's right.
I'll throw out an idea. What if we took two from every stakeholder category except for just one from the open space resources and took every resident who applied? There's 11 of them.
As, as at-large members?
Yeah. I, I concur. I think that would be an excellent formation of this group. It would be a large committee.
Twenty-two?
It would be 23. It would be a large committee, but 17 or 23, to me, feels the same. And we've got a lot of people on here that are passionate about this particular topic and would provide, oh, actually, 24 with Claudia included. So there's, I think there's room at the table for plenty of people.
Okay, so.
So which, so you'll vote for one open space resource group?
Yeah.
And you'll add a second, so you'll do three under economic development? Or just add Will Kempton and Claudia Cummings?
I think it's Will Kempton and Claudia Cummings as a package deal.
I'm not knowing, yes, is it a motion? It's not a motion, right? We're still discussing.
Yeah, just a discussion. Throwing it as an idea.
Yeah. You know, on the open space, I'm.
The only reason I suggested that is because Crystal Tobias applied as a resident, so that organization would be represented. So they, they wouldn't need to be duplicated.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I know that it is a large number of people. Obviously, not everybody's going to go to every meeting. There will be some drop-off, but I, I do, I think this is just, this is an important topic. There's a lot of interest, and.
Can you tell me what organization Crystal represents?
Full Fan, Friends of Lakes, Folsom and Natoma, bottom of page one of the organizations.
Can we agree on these two things separately? Like this, or this, changing this and then changing the, including all of these people? Make them two, can we, I agree with what you're saying about this. I want to discuss the at-large people.
Okay, well, I mean, I, in, in some ways, it affects this because if you're not going to take all these, then maybe you do want to vote for the two people in open space, and there are only two things, so.
Well, if I had known we were going to do that, I probably would have found another person from District Five, so, well, I see somebody else applied, actually. I'm sorry, I was looking at District Four. I don't know, it just seems like a lot. I understand what you're saying, I always want public input, but, I mean, yeah. I mean, I saw your face, too. That's a lot of people to manage, but.
I, I mean, for my part, right, the, regardless if I were to choose John Lane, Jim Lofgren, Jennifer Lane, or Crystal Tobias, or anybody else on this list, I am 100% confident that the rest of them are going to show up at the meeting anyway. So we may as well just go ahead and get everybody's opinion on, on the record.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm committed to having long meetings if I'm part of this, continuing to be part of this.
So Sarah, I think Crystal Marino is part of the Full Fan, that's what you're saying?
Crystal Tobias?
Perhaps we can ask Crystal to come up and just ask her if she feels comfortable representing Full Fan independently from her own personal opinion because we'd be asking her to kind of wear both hats.
She's a founder.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, things change over time. Do you feel comfortable doing both jobs?
I do. And, and just to expand on my activities in Folsom, I worked at the zoo for 25 years. I was on the Friends of the Folsom Zoo for 25 years. I was on the Stakeholders Committee that redeveloped Sutter Street. And I was on the Traffic Calming Committee after 9/11. So I'm not just a one-trick pony. I love Folsom. I, since I was a little kid, I've wanted to live here in the historic district, and I'm here. And so full, creating Full Fan was probably the last big thing that I did. I'm not on the board anymore, but I'm still very active in that, in that organization. And we are growing significantly. We are, we have a press release, a press event tomorrow morning at an ungodly hour to kick off Juneteenth. And then we have Juneteenth activities all day on Saturday, and I will be there most of that day. So I, I do think that I can represent all of those hats.
Clearly, that's true. Thank you.
I love, I love Folsom, I, I love this city, and I really want to do everything I can to protect and, and develop in a, in a thoughtful and, and, you know, just a really visionary way that doesn't take away anything from the River District and only enhances it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Go for it. Okay, then I'm going to move that we take up, take two stakeholders from each category except for the open space resources category, where we'll only take one, and that we appoint all of the, all 11 of the residents who applied for an at-large position to the ad hoc committee.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk, or any other questions or discussion? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Rohrbach, yes. Aquino?
Yes.
Helen Chirla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Okay.
So now we get to vote for these.
Okay.
Should we pass it down?
Cultural Resource now has two, two.
Open space. Oh, wait, am I doing that one? Yeah. Is that right? Two of each, sorry. Check, check. Okay. Two, 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 I think. Is this yours, YK?
Oh, Pam, I'm coming, I lost.
Just one, just one. Same for YK. Oh, YK, same thing. It was just one of these, just one, in the open space resources. Yeah.
Who thought this was going to be more complicated than the P-bid?
Not me.
Okay, ready? Okay, the first ballot is Councilmember Sarah Aquino for the category for major landowners. She voted for California State Parks and U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, Cultural Resources, Folsom History, and Shingle Springs Band of Miwok Indians, Recreation Resources category, CSUS Aquatic Center, and Lake Natoma paddlers, Open Space Resources, Friends of Folsom Parkway's Historic District, HFRA Historic Folsom Residents Association, and Sutter Street Merchants Association, DBA Folsom Historic District Association, Economic Development, River District, Economic Development category, River District Organizing Committee, and Folsom Chamber of Commerce, visit Folsom. Councilmember Mike Kozlowski for the stakeholder category of major landowners, California State Parks, U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. California State Parks, U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, Cultural Resources category, Folsom History, and Shingle Spring Band of Miwok Indians. Recreation Resources category, CSUS Aquatic Center and Lake Natoma paddlers. Open Space Resources, Friends of Folsom Parkway's Historic District category, HFRA Historic Folsom Residents Association, and Sutter Street Merchants Association, DBA Folsom Historic District Association, Economic Development category, River District Organizing Committee, and Folsom Chamber of Commerce, Visit Folsom. Mayor Rodriguez for stakeholder category, major landowners, voted for California State Parks and U.S. Bureau of Reclamation for Cultural Resources, Friends of Folsom Parkway and Folsom History.
Sorry, for clarification, Friends of Folsom Preservation?
Yes.
Okay, and what was the second one?
Folsom History for Recreation Resources category, CSUS Aquatic Center and Fat Track, Folsom Auburn Trail Riders Action Coalition for Open Space Resources category. Friends of Folsom Parkway's for Historic District category. Looks like none.
Oh, wait, which one?
Is that?
Yes, that's a, that's a...
That's Mark?
That's, okay. Historic District category HFRA Historic, Historic Folsom Residents Association and Sutter Street Merchants Association, DBA Folsom Historic District Association, and Economic Development category, River District Organizing Committee, and Folsom Chamber of Commerce, Visit Folsom. Councilmember, Councilmember Rohrbaugh stakeholder category, major landowners, California State Parks and U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, Cultural Resources, Friends of Folsom and Folsom History. Recreation Resources category CSUS Aquatic Center and Fat Track, or, I'm sorry, you, CSUS Aquatic Center and Lake Natoma paddlers. Ocean, Open Space Resources category. Friends of Folsom Parkway's Historic District, HFRA Historic Folsom Residents Association and Sutter Street Merchants Association. Economic Development category, River District Organizing Committee.
And I meant to check off the next one as well.
And Folsom Chamber of Commerce, Visit Folsom. And the final ballot is from Vice Mayor Chalum Charla. Stakeholder category, major landowners, California State Parks and U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. Cultural Resources category, Friends of Folsom Preservation and Heritage Preservation League. Recreation Resources category, Fat Track, Folsom Auburn Trail Riders Action Coalition and Lake Natoma paddlers. Open Space Resources category, Friends of Folsom Parkway's Historic District category, HFRA Historic Folsom Residents Association and Sutter Street Merchants Association. And finally, Economic Development category, River District Organizing Committee and Folsom Auto Mall Dealers Association.
Oh, the very last one, Pam. Oops, sorry.
The very last one was a vote for the very last one rather than the second to last.
Thank you, I apologize for that.
I thought Joe will be there always. He is our well-wisher, and we want to bring the John.
So I'm highlighting the top two vote-getters in each category and the one in the open space category. Would you like me to read that into the record or the clerk to read that into the record?
Madam Clerk, why don't you read that into the record?
Okay. So you want me to read each category?
That is highlighted.
The two.
Yellow ones.
Okay. All right, sorry, it's hard to see from up there, and I don't have it in front of me. Highlighted, okay, for the stakeholder categories, major landowners, it's the, the stakeholders are California State Parks and U.S. Bureau of Reclamation for Cultural Resources, Friends of Folsom Preservation and Folsom History. For Recreation Resources category, CSUS Aquatic Center and Lake Natoma paddlers. For Open Space Resources, there's only one in this category, Friends of Folsom Parkway's. Historic District category. HFRA Historic Folsom Residents Association and Sutter Street Merchants Association. And Economic Development is River District Organizing Committee and Folsom Chamber of Commerce, Visit Folsom.
And per the previous recommendation or action of the council, all 11 of the at-large members will join the committee.
Okay. Be good. All right. Would the clerk please call the next item? So just really quick. The city, Assistant City Clerk's not back yet.
They haven't finished tabulating the ballots.
Okay, all right. All right, would the clerk please call the next item?
So the next item will be convening joint meeting of the City Council and Traffic Safety Committee, Committee Meeting.
Okay.
Should I do the roll call?
Uh, yes. Or do you want me to read that?
Should we take these out of order?
Yeah.
We did, we took things out of order.
Now, the mayor, if I could suggest that we do a roll call for the joint meeting, please?
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Rohrbaugh? Aquino?
Here.
Chalum Charla?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
And Rodriguez?
Here.
And Traffic Safety Committee members? Traffic Safety Committee members Bailey?
Here.
Roush?
Roush, here.
Roush, Goddard?
Here.
Bosch?
Here.
Galovich?
Chris Emery for Galovich.
And Washburn? Appson and Wilson.
Okay.
And next item?
Welcome, Mark.
And the next item is joint meeting, new business, item 15, workshop regarding traffic safety along the Folsom Lake Corridor.
Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, members of the council, members of the Traffic Safety Committee. I'm Mark Rackman, your Public Works Director. The item before you this evening was born from two separate actions. And at the February 23rd Traffic Safety Committee meeting, the committee requested that a joint meeting be held between the City Council and the committee to discuss traffic safety issues along East Natoma Street and the Folsom Lake Crossing roadways. And then on March 14th of this year, under the request for future council items, the council requested the same joint workshop, although the scope of the workshop was expanded to encompass a larger corridor. So that's what we have for you this evening. With me this evening is Zach Bosch, our Senior Engineer, who oversees our traffic safety and operations for the city and is also the Public Works Representative on the Traffic Safety Committee. Lieutenant Emery is present as well, and as, as is Sergeant Galovich, who are on the traffic enforcement wing of the Folsom Police Department. And then lastly, but certainly not least, Robert Paderna from Kim Lee Horn is also with us this evening and available to answer questions. Kim Lee Horn assisted us in preparing for this evening's workshop. So the scope of this workshop includes these five key areas. We're gonna define what the Folsom Lake Corridor is and summarize the safety concerns that staff are, is aware of. It was requested that we give an overview of staff's approach to traffic safety analysis. The Vice Mayor, in a separate request, had asked that we bring back a discussion of speed limit methodology and some of the data related to this particular corridor. This is information that many of the council members have all, already seen through our speed limit updates, and so please bear with us. There, you know, this is information that some members of the council and members of the committee have not seen before, so it should be educational for, for folks. We are going to address a request for a traffic signal at the East Natoma-Gianata intersection. And then we're gonna conclude with a review of the corrective measures that are already in place or will be undertaken to address the safety concerns along the corridor. So the corridor, as it was defined in the request for this item, is the entire network of roadways that goes around Folsom Lake. So it starts up at the Placer County line with Folsom Auburn Road, extends across Lake Natoma on the Folsom Lake Crossing, and then down onto the segment of East Natoma Street that leads to the Blue Ravine-Green Valley intersection, and then follows Green Valley out to El Dorado County. What is unique about this corridor is it is essentially a regional facility. This is the only network of roads that allows regional traffic to get around Folsom Lake unless you go another 30 miles up to Highway 49. So, uh, so this corridor does carry a lot of traffic that has no trip end in Folsom. It is purely cut-through traffic. In fact, some of the, um, the data that, that Kim Lee Horn analyzed concluded that 75% of the traffic using this corridor has no trip end within the city of Folsom. It's purely cut-through traffic. And so here, here's a snapshot of the average daily traffic volumes that, that we're experiencing on these various road segments. And so you'll see two numbers. The top number would be the most recent traffic count data that we have for each of these road segments. And then the bottom number is what was forecasted in our 2035 general plan as what was assumed to be the build-out or ultimate traffic volume that we would experience on those road segments by the year 2035 under the current development strategies in the city of Folsom and our neighboring communities. And, and certainly, we all see the evidence of that cut-through traffic through the extremely high left-turn movements from Folsom Auburn Road on the Folsom Lake Crossing, from East Natoma Street on to Green Valley Road, and vice versa. They, those are the predominant movements that you see on the corridor. So the traffic safety issues that we are aware of, that your staff is aware of, there have certainly been recently some very high-profile, very severe collisions up on the Folsom Lake Crossing corridor. And we have a history of those as well that dates back prior to the analysis period that we're currently in. We have also observed, primarily in the recent rainy, wet weather, a number of vehicles entering curves at unsafe speeds resulting in spin-outs and loss of control. There have been concerns expressed that the speeds on the East Natoma Corridor are excessive. And Zach will be talking when he covers the speed limit portion of the presentation. He will share with you the data that we have regarding speeds on that corridor. There have been concerns expressed that the sight distance at the East Natoma-Gianata intersection is substandard and dangerous, and so we have assessed that as well. And then lastly, as I mentioned earlier, there has been a request that that intersection be signaledized, and that has been analyzed by staff and by consultants that the city's hired to fact-check us or, or cross-check our work. So, moving into the traffic safety analysis portion, first, generally speaking, a good traffic safety program relies on three key elements: engineering, enforcement, and education, the three Es. Without any one of those elements, it's like having a three-legged stool with two legs. It's just not effective. It's prone, it's, it's prone to failure. So you do try to emphasize all three areas, you know. Education starts from the minute you get your driver's handbook to, you know, getting your driver's license, to becoming a more experienced driver. It gets into social media campaigns, public service announcements, and then the radar feedback signs that we, we put out periodically to advise people of their behavior. Engineering, of course, is everything from the design to the construction to the maintenance and operations of capital improvements that are meant to manage traffic flow in a safe and efficient manner. And enforcement encompasses both the efforts of the police department, but also the court system to ensure that people that are not adhering to regulations are, are fined, are subject to, you know, other disciplinary action up to and including license revocation in, in the case of repeat offenders. And it also looks at things like speed enforcement programs, DUI checkpoints, any manner of traffic enforcement program that the police department decides to undertake. So traffic safety assessment, there's a lot of information on here, but what this boils down to is we, we look at the traffic volumes on the roads, which, which we covered earlier, and use the, those in comparison to the number of accidents that occur on those roads to generate collision rates. And the, and the importance of the collision rate is so that we're comparing similar road segments on the same basis so that we can say, and against the state average, so that we can determine if a given road segment is above the average rate, how it compares to other roadways throughout the city of Folsom. Similarly, you do, you do rates for intersections. It's called million vehicles entering the intersection compared to the number of accidents that you're experiencing. And then the, the rest of the information really is gleaned from the reported collisions that the, where the police department actually takes a report and has a report on file. Those, those reports contain just volumes and volumes of information that can assist not only your engineers, but your police staff in assessing why a collision happened, you know, what, what were the factors involved? You know, you know, whether it was the road conditions, the vehicle conditions, the condition of the motorist. And then, you know, when we can detect patterns, then we can start looking at solutions to mitigate, you know, and try to eliminate those accidents from happening. Even the narratives in those collision reports can be telling, you know, finding out information on what people saw before an accident occurred or, or what a driver was doing, or the, the behavior of their vehicle before a collision occurred. So, this is all great information that comes from the thorough reporting of the police department. So this is information I took from our last local road safety plan, which was completed in 2021. So the information is a little bit dated. It will be updated this year when we update the local, the LRSP, and it will capture the current year's information. But what I'd like to share with you here are a couple of things. One, the year 2019 was an exceptionally tragic year for the city of Folsom. You know, not only did we have 21 fatal slash severe injuries, but 12 of those were fatals. That was the single highest year of fatal collisions that the city of Folsom had ever experienced. Prior to that, the highest year was five fatal collisions. Prior to that, the highest year was five fatal collisions. Excuse me, fatal collisions. We believe that it appears that that year was an outlier in terms of fatalities, that we have not continued on that trend or exceeded that trend. But nevertheless, that certainly was a great cause for concern for your staff. The other thing I'd point out is you're seeing, in a five-year period, almost 3,000 collisions, the vast majority of which resulted in property damage only or light-to-moderate injuries. So why I feel that that's important to share with you is that, given the limited staff, the limited resources available to us, we have to focus on the worst collisions and trying to mitigate those as best as possible. We don't have the resources to try to correct all nearly 600 collisions a year. We do try to focus on that top category of fatal or severe injury. And part of the reason for that is, again, the local road safety plan. This is a state-mandated document. We've discussed this with the council, the committee before. This is the gateway document that allows us to qualify for state safety improvement funding. If you do not have an updated local road safety plan, you cannot apply for that funding. If you do have an updated local road safety plan, you can only apply for safety projects that were identified in the local road safety plan. The local road safety plan focuses on fatal and severe collisions because that is the state's priority to eliminate or reduce the severity of those types of collisions.
How frequently is that plan updated?
On a two- or three-year basis.
Thank you.
We try to stay ahead of the next grant cycle of HCP so that we have an updated plan right before the next cycle comes out. Yeah, so I think I covered everything there. The goals that you see listed here are essentially handed down to us from the state. These are the state's priorities, focusing on safety of pedestrians and bicyclists, coordination of stakeholders, and a fair and equitable approach to traffic safety improvements, taking away socioeconomic considerations or other considerations, focusing on if a severe accident occurs, where does it occur, how do you mitigate it, regardless of all other factors. So we talked about crash rates earlier. The state has a calculated average for certain types of roadway facilities. In this case, talking about four-lane undivided roadways. The state average is .97 per million vehicle miles. So we've compared that rate to several of the corridors here in the city of Folsom. You'll note that the four road segments that make up the Folsom Lake corridor, none of them exceed the state average, which is a good thing. And you'll also note that the East Bidwell Street corridor greatly exceeds the state average. And a lot of those are driven by, fortunately, low-speed, low-severity collisions. Rear-end collisions at red lights are one of the most predominant types of collisions that we experience throughout the city of Folsom, and is one of the most predominant on that particular corridor. But for the purpose of tonight's discussion and the countermeasures that we're going to be presenting to you, it isn't the rate of collisions on this corridor that has our attention. It's the severity of those collisions, primarily the ones that we experienced up on Folsom Lake Crossing in the vicinity of the spillway and the curved portion. Primary collision factors, again, a lot of information here. And we've broken it down to look at Folsom Lake Crossing and East Natoma independently. But you'll see that unsafe speed contributes to over half of the collisions on the Folsom Lake Crossing, and these have resulted in vehicle lane departures, where the vehicle leaves its lane and hits a fixed object, or what are written down as improper turns, where the motorist crosses over the center line and strikes an oncoming vehicle. East Natoma Street has a number of collisions involving the speed leading into that horizontal curve between Gianata and the signal at Folsom Lake Crossing, leading to hit objects, side-swipe crashes. And then there are, again, this East Natoma corridor runs all the way down to the Blue Ravine-Green Valley intersection. That intersection experiences a large number of rear-end collisions, people coming over the crest of the hill and experiencing backed-up traffic, and leading to rear-end collisions on that section approaching Blue Ravine Road.
Mark, the categories identified here are ones that the police department would put into their report. That's how we derive these?
Yeah, these are gleaned from what's called the statewide integrated traffic reporting system, or SWITERS, which is the collection of all traffic reports filed throughout the state of California. But then this one was filtered back for the city of Folsom for the recent five-year period. One thing I want to point-
Mark, could I ask you what the purple one is, 11% auto roe violation? Can you explain that?
Sure, auto right-of-way violation. So this is typically collisions that occur at an intersection, whether it's two intersections of two streets or of a street and a driveway, where the cause of the collision was someone pulling out of a side street into oncoming traffic when they did not have the right-of-way. I want to point out that the term unsafe speed as a primary collision factor can often be misinterpreted. The initial reaction people would have is that suggests that 51% of people are causing accidents due to excessive speed, well above the posted speed limit. The reality is that a lot of times, low-speed collisions are listed as unsafe speed for conditions. The Vehicle Code 22350, which is the basic speed law, is what's cited by the police department for every rear-end collision. And so the safe speed, in the case of a rear-end collision, is zero miles per hour. Another example is an accident that occurs on a curve where, under wet weather conditions, someone spins out, causes an accident. The safe speed in that case is actually something lower than what is posted because the expectation is that the motorist would recognize that the road's wet or it's raining, and that they should have adjusted their speed. There can even be the factors involving the condition of the vehicle. Are their tires bald? Is their vehicle maintained? These all contribute to the collisions that we experience.
Mark, one quick one. Just to reiterate, every unsafe speed, like every rear-end is an unsafe speed. That's what he just said.
Generally speaking.
Generally speaking. And how is the data coming into this, when somebody calls the 911? Or they can directly go into the police website? How does that data being collected?
And certainly Lieutenant Emery can correct me if I misspeak, but when the police department responds out to a collision and opt to take a report, and I don't know that they take a report at every collision. There might be somewhere, it's not severe enough to warrant a report. But this is information that is only based off of reported collisions that the police department completes the report and enters it into their database.
Got it. So the number of accidents could be more. Sometimes they hit and they leave, they exchange the insurance cards, and they're gone. Okay, thank you.
So another thing we look at is where the accidents occur. It's a pin map, a GIS map, showing us are there concentrations of collisions at a given location? This can be a valuable tool as well, so we can then focus on why are there so many accidents occurring at one given location? Or can we look at a road segment and say, okay, there's not a lot of accidents occurring here, or they're at seemingly random locations that don't indicate a trend? This is every collision that was reported on this corridor in the last five years. And again, this brings home the point that I made earlier. You look at property damage complaint of pain level of collisions. Here they are on that road segment leading down to the very congested signal at Blue Ravine-Green Valley. Those are almost all rear-end collisions where someone ends up either with just a dented fender, so you got a PDO, or they might have a whiplash, which is a complaint of pain. You see that again on a much smaller scale in the vicinity of the signal at Folsom Point, at the signal at East Natoma-Folsom Lake Crossing, and again, very much at the signal at Folsom Auburn Road-Folsom Lake Crossing, and even up at the damn road and at the entrance to Pine Brook Village. Our traffic signal locations tend to be some of our highest collision locations, whether it is the auto right-of-way collisions of someone running a red light or making an unsafe turn, or these rear-end collisions. Filtering this exhibit down to just the fatal and severe injuries over the last five years, because these are the ones your staff is focusing on, trying to find corrective measures. The first thing I would point out, though, are you're going to see DUI, driving under the influence, driving under the influence two more times, cellphone in use. These are driver conditions that, frankly, there are no engineering solutions for someone who's driving that irresponsibly, right? Whether they're under the influence or not even paying attention because they're distracted. But you can see that the consequences of that type of driver behavior have led to four of the nine severe injuries. The one out on Green Valley Road was a late-night, extremely-high-speed collision, where a young driver lost control of his vehicle, and I believe he struck a tree and died as a result. There was another high rear-end collision on the Folsom Lake Crossing that resulted in significant injury. But again, these are the ones that really alarmed us. Prior to this five-year period, there had never been an incident of a motorist crossing the center line or losing control of their vehicle to the extent where they cross over and strike another vehicle. We had had that happen in the prior five years on the S-curve between the Johnny Cash Bridge and the spillway signal at the top of the hill. That's why those two accidents are the reason, the motivation behind the current median barrier project, and why we qualified for HCP funding for that. These accidents are a new trend, an alarming new trend that we are evaluating. And it very likely is going to lead to a Phase II, an extension of the median barrier further down the hill, either to the gun range or possibly the gun rage road, or possibly all the way down to the bridge. That remains to be seen. And then the one, again, on the curve between Gianata and the Folsom Lake Crossing signal, this was, again, someone losing control and skidding across the center line and striking a vehicle on the other side of the road. Again, that's why we're putting a median barrier there, not to prevent that accident from happening, but to protect the motorist on the other side of the center line to reduce the severity of that collision. The friction course that we've already brought to you, the open-grade asphalt project, that is designed to try to allow those motorists to maintain their traction, stay in their lane, and prevent them from losing control. So that's another example of a corrective measure that is geared towards these severe accidents that we've experienced on this corridor. So at this point, I'm going to sit down. I'm going to let Mr. Bosch get up here and cover the speed limit portion of this. And then when he's done, I'll get back up, unless you have any questions you want me to cover right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, City Council, Madam Mayor, and fellow Traffic Safety Committee members. Zach Bosch, Senior Civil Engineer in the Traffic Division for the Public Works Department. Tonight, I will be presenting information compiled by the Public Works Department to explain the regulations and guidance to establish speed limits. There's a lot of confusion about how speed limits are established. I will also provide an overview of the engineering and traffic survey process and how the data is used to identify the prevailing speed along the roadway, which essentially establishes the speed limit, the posted enforceable speed limit. And finally, I will provide the joint members of tonight's meeting with a summary of the most recent speed and volume data collections along East Natoma between Folsom Lake Crossing and Elvies Way. So first off, there is a little bit of background information regarding speed limits. Of course, the California Vehicle Code is the basis for much of this information. Much of these rules and laws are written into the most current version, the 2023 California Vehicle Code. I will just highlight a few of the more significant chapters or sections within that document, starting off with Section 627. And so this section contains language about what the engineering and traffic survey shall contain. It must contain these elements for it to be valid and enforceable and for it to be a posted enforceable speed limit along that roadway. There is no variance for the state law. There's no deviation from the state law. These items must be followed by the letter for a posted speed limit to be enforceable from our police department, from their radar and lidar units that they keep with them. Without that tool, they have other methods of enforcement. They're not as reliable. I'll obviously let Chris Emery speak to that a little more. Pacing is another method, but obviously, if you have a police officer pacing behind you, your inclination is going to slow down, right? You're not going to continue the speed that you're at. It's just not as reliable as our radar unit is. So another section is the Section 40802. And so that section defines what a speed trap is. And so there's a lot of misconception about a street speed trap, about the verbiage that's associated with that. But essentially, it identifies roadways which must contain an engineering and traffic survey to be valid for enforcement. And so that is your speed trap. If you don't have that, then the police department cannot enforce by the methods I spoke to about earlier. So that all runs through the California Vehicle Code. The Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the California version of that also establishes guidance for data collection efforts. So there are certain elements that must be adhered to when you are collecting the data for the engineering and traffic survey, and I'll touch upon that a little bit more. And then finally, the city council here adopts the speed limits and is adopted by ordinance on a regular basis, every seven to 10 years, or as needed. And I'll talk about some of those nuances a little bit later. The basic speed law, like as Mark described earlier, this is the basis for reasonable driving behavior, regardless of what is posted. The onus is on the driver to drive at a speed in which they adhere to safe conditions. So if there's rainy weather and the road is wet, the onus is on the driver to reduce the speeds, to engage in speeds which are safe to persons and property, essentially. So some of these factors that do influence prevailing speeds are roadway conditions, so the lane widths, your adjacent development, or lack thereof. If you have a lot of driveways, you will see a reduced speed along that corridor. Weather conditions, driver behavior, presence or congestion along the corridor would adjust speeds, as well as pavement condition and other factors. So back to an engineering and traffic survey. So I will be able to provide you some information about determining the prima facie speed, the prevailing speed, along the corridor, how the survey is an engineering document that determines the prevailing speed or 85th percentile speed, which is the speed at which 85% of all traffic are traveling at or below. And I'll also identify that a survey is required by law to post an enforceable speed limit again, to allow our police department to enforce using their radar device. It also establishes what speed the vast majority of drivers are traveling at or around. And so this is important because you want to establish a speed limit at a comfortable speed at which the majority of drivers are adhering to, right? If you set one exceptionally low, you'll have the majority of these drivers essentially breaking the vehicle code and subject to tickets. So we, we are very aware of that and we try to establish a speed at which the majority of people are, are in compliance with the speed limit, but not to an excessive level. And so this is a, an example of a recently completed engineering and traffic study or survey that was performed by our consultant, T J K M. This was done back in two thousand and nineteen. And so there are some factors, as I described before, that are required to be identified within this document. Obviously you want the, the name of the street, the location of the survey, the, the traveling speed or the direction of travel. It is nice to have a map of the road segment in relation to other major roadways. The daily factors such as the, the vehicle volume, the length of the street and the street classification. We also identify the collision history, the accident rate along the, the corridor, and we compare that to the statistical five year average for the statewide comparison. Section D is our, is our roadway conditions. And so this is how you identify what I'll later describe as conditions not apparent, not readily apparent to the motorist. And this will become important later in the discussion as we are, we're able to use this section here to, to downward zone from a, from a forty five, eighty fifth percentile down to a forty mile an hour enforceable posted speed limit. So all those characteristics have to be identified within this section D. And then finally, this is an engineering document. This is a legal document. It is required to be signed and stamped by a traffic engineer. This is a, a, a document that is, is given to the Sacramento County Traffic Division for their reference when they are, are met with a, a ticket that they're, that someone is trying to beat, right? So they can reference this when they go back into the, in the folder that we provide them when we adopt these. And so on the right hand side, you'll see that, that, that's a typical, well, maybe older picture of a radar device. But underneath that, you see that each engineering and traffic survey was performed under the supervision of a licensed engineer with, with experience in collection and determining recommended speed limits.
Is that, is that something we use a consulting engineer for or do one of our staff do the signing and sealing of that doc?
Well, I have been the recipient of, of these surveys. I have actually performed them back a while ago, but current staff levels kind of require us to consult this out. And we just, it, it seems like a, a good consultant contract.
Very good. Thank you.
And so before you, this is a, a printout of the data collected by that, that trained professional with that, that radar unit. And so this is again, showing the data points of each vehicle that they surveyed. And there are requirements for which vehicle they select to survey. They cannot be surveyed within the hours of commute, general commute traffic, so seven to nine A M. and four to six P M. There has to be dry and clear weather, right? You can't be subject to enforcement along the roadway as you perform these surveys. And you have to collect at least a hundred cars to create a representative sample size along the corridor. So the, the most important numbers you'll find from this document are going to be your eighty fifth percentile speeds, which again, is required by law to be identified for the basis of your postable enforceable speed limit. For this example, we have a forty six mile an hour eighty fifth percentile speed. Other important numbers are your fiftieth percentile, which is the average along the corridor and your ten mile an hour pace speed, which is the largest single grouping, ten mile an hour grouping of cars. And it gives a good representation of the general traveling speed. So you'll see, you know, fifty to seventy percent of traveling cars in that, that one ten mile an hour pace. And so this is highlighted by, by Public Works, the emphasis on the fifty mile an hour and eighty fifth percentile or the fifty, fiftieth percentile speed and the eighty fifth percentile speed. The numbers on this chart go from lowest at the top to highest on the bottom. The fiftieth percentile speed is highlighted in yellow for you and the eighty fifth percentile speed is highlighted in red. And so this is a, a, a good indication of the grouping around that. It typically follows your, your most common bell curve, right? The majority of people are going to be represented within the upper bounds of the, the curve with very small outliers on the low end side and the high end side. And so based on the eighty fifth percentile speed, you end up with a number, right? And so not always does that number end up on a five or a zero. So now we talk about how do we get to a speed limit that we all know that's, that's regulated and enforceable? So for this example and for other times when eighty fifth percentile speed lands on a, a non-rounded number, you have to round to the closest five mile an hour increment. So in this example, forty eight, you must round up to fifty. And so that's your basis for an enforceable speed limit. We are given through engineering judgment, an opportunity to round down one time from that fifty to a forty five, using that section D of the engineering and traffic survey as your basis. So factors that are not commonly known to the motorist, so a high accident rate, say a high usage of pedestrian and bikes in the area, general other factors, unimproved shoulders or insufficient pedestrian network. Those are all factors that can contribute to your ability to downward zone, right? And so another example is how you round down. So this one forty six, you would round down to forty five. And then ultimately you could use that, that ability to, to round down to forty. The M U T C D provides guidance in this regard. And they state that you have to take great care when you downward zone beyond the additional rounding, right? Especially when you're going below the speed limit. Because in this example, if the fiftieth percentile speed is at forty three miles an hour and you post it at forty, well, you've essentially created a situation where motorists are traveling at a general safe speed, but they're subject to violations on the posted speed limit. So there, there has to be taken great care to downward zone beyond the additional five mile an hour increment. So this is a, this is an important factor here. And so this is a, this is data collected from our most recent traffic survey, engineering and traffic survey along the corridor, Folsom Auburn Road as a posted speed limit of fifty miles an hour and eighty fifth percentile speed, fifty four. There is the section of Folsom Lake Crossing in particular on this chart. When we did survey that road, we got an eighty fifth percentile of sixty four miles an hour. So knowing this information, knowing that we had to round up to sixty five and could potentially round it down to sixty if there were factors, that was beyond what we were willing to do at that time. It's currently posted at fifty five. Our, our police department has to use other methods besides radar to enforce that roadway. It kind of limits their ability to enforce that, that fifty five miles an hour. They could enforce the state maximum speed limit along that roadway. But again, that's a, that's a higher speed than, than what is posted.
I, I apologize if you've covered this already, but how do you choose the location to do the speed study when you have a long run like that? Because where your arrow is pointing may not be where the study was done exactly, but that happens to be the straight downhill part.
Yeah.
And is, would you try and choose the spot where people are most likely to be going faster? Or would you try and choose a spot where it's more neutral or closer to an intersection, farther from intersection halfway?
Yeah. I'll take it. Yeah. So usually you take a typical cross section of that roadway. You want to be outside the bounds of a, a traffic control device such as a signal. If it's around a curve, you're not going to collect your data along that curve. You're going to create it just outside of the boundaries of that. The, the roadway conditions are important when you decide the segments of that road. So it, Folsom Lake Crossing is a typical cross section, right? Bike lane, travel lane, travel lane across the entire segment. So from Folsom Lake Crossing in East Natomah to Folsom Auburn, we consider that one segment. It is under the discretion of the engineer in charge of, of collecting the data to choose a representative location.
I think it's representative of the traffic that I see there all the time. I'm just curious how you choose a location.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the only thing I would chime in is that all, you also have to take into consideration where can the surveyor safely park their vehicle and, and still be able to observe oncoming traffic? And that can be like, again, on the Folsom Lake Crossing case, they're, they're very limited in where they can safely do that. And also you can't park on the side of that road due to the prison and, and the dam. So they might, in that case, I think they might have done it at the gun range driveway, which is right on that straight section downhill and probably where some of the higher speeds are.
Yeah. Downhill heading west.
And so now that we have a good basis of, of speed limits and how they're, how we post enforceable speed limits, I do want to provide the committee and the council with the, the summary of, of our most recent data collection efforts on East Natomah between Folsom Lake Crossing and Elvies. This before you is a chart with three distinct data collection efforts with different, three different devices. The, the top line was referenced before, that's from our two thousand and nineteen speed survey, engineering and traffic survey. This was performed by T J K M. with a, a certified radar gun with a, a trained professional collecting that data. And the, the final one is, is April fourth through April sixth. That was done by consultant National Data and Surveying Services. And they used a device, a side firing radar device. It's set up perpendicular to the road. It oscillates thirty times a second. It collects the, the point at which a vehicle crosses the, the boundary. It knows that that's a vehicle and it can, can actually collect the speeds a lot more accurately across multi-lane approaches. It's, it's typical application is freeways or on-ramp situations, so higher speed, higher volumes. So based on the recommendation from our consultant, we chose that as, as kind of our most recent data collection efforts. Highlighted in red was a data collection that the city performed using a, what we call our stealth radar unit. It's about the size of a small briefcase. It's mounted to a streetlight or some nondescript pole. It hides very well if you're trying to collect prevailing speeds along residential streets or lower volume streets. When we did deploy this and got our, our data back, it was obviously alarming when you see an eighty fifth percentile well exceeding what we were anticipating. Our confidence level kind of dropped with this data when you look at the, both the ten mile an hour pace, the percent in pace, the other data that was collected in this and the average traffic volume. It's almost thirty percent of what we're currently seeing. So I'm sorry, it was thirty percent less than what we're seeing currently and almost forty percent less than our pre-pandemic levels. So we believe that that deployment of that radar device, that stealth unit was improper for the location it was installed. It's, it's more commonly used in our residential neighborhood when we get complaints with speeding. We'll deploy quickly and easily, last about a week on the battery charge and we can, we can quickly retrieve that and report out the data. So our, we have much higher levels of confidence in the top data point and then the bottom six data points for a typical representation of the speed along that corridor. We have learned from this. This is a learning opportunity. Obviously we all make mistakes. That would be not be a typical application that we would, we would install that again had. And so that is kind of the overview of the speed survey laws, the California Vehicle Code, current traffic conditions, data collection efforts. So I, I welcome any questions about the process of establishing speed limits, the, the current law or anything like that.
Could you explain that ten mile per hour pace and the percentage of pace? I don't remember seeing that before.
Oh, sure. So with, within this data that is collected, the ten mile an hour pace is your, essentially your ten mile an hour window in which the most vehicles traveled within that. So if you have a ten mile an hour pace of forty one through fifty, then the majority, not the majority, but the most amount of cars are in that pace.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. Josh, if you don't mind, number twenty four P, one slide before. Yeah. So the one you are explaining, it is alarming. This is a, a device collected data. And other numbers are human radar gun.
The, the top one is, right? So the top one is data that was collected with a radar gun with an individual and an unmarked vehicle positioned along the roadway. The bottom six, so they are sequential and in location, those were collected using that side firing radar that was mounted to the streetlight pole. It mounts perpendicular to the vehicle traffic and it, you know, shoots a radar and oscillates across the, the roadway width and it collects the data that way. So it's totally automated and it's collecting what we consider rather accurate data based on the conversations we have with our consultant.
So the one, I, I know, decreasing the speed is not the usual thing unless we do some special things. Do you know, you know, the numbers going down, is it the inaccuracy of this number two or any factors there?
We, we do consider the data collected by that device as inaccurate because of the, the variance between the first set of data from T J K M. and then the second set of data from our, our newest survey. As you can see, the, the pace speeds are much higher, right? And the percentage pace is, is skewed so much lower that there is a anomaly within that device that before we could capture that and do quality control, we had already distributed to the stakeholders within the, in the area. Again, a learning experience for us that we don't feel that's the proper application for this type of device, that multi-lane, high-speed roadway. This, this device just is not set up for that.
Did, did we have anomalous data during that sort of COVID timeframe anywhere else in the city that we collected? Because that's still a time when lots of people were working from home. So the, the average daily volume being less doesn't surprise me all that much. And I, you know, anecdotally, I think people were just driving faster during COVID times because there was less traffic generally.
It's entirely possible, but statistically speaking, even under a scenario like that, you're still going to see that bell curve. You know, it's, you know, you're still going to have the preponderance, preponderance of people traveling at what they feel is the reasonable and prudent speed for the roadway. And so, yeah, I, I think you could, you could accurately state that during that period of time, that bell curve shifted up, but everybody shifted up because there were fewer vehicles on the road. But I, I would also note that I think our experience and, and talking to other professionals statewide, volumes didn't drop that much.
Oh, not a third like that.
Yeah. I mean, we did, you know, obviously for that one period of time at the beginning of COVID, when everybody was stuck at home, yeah, that, that was very different. But by this point, I think we were starting to get back towards quote unquote normalcy.
Thank you. Okay. If there are no further questions, I will bring Mark back up here to conclude the presentation. Thank you.
You can't have an old guy like me around without getting a little bit of a history lesson in response to your earlier question about do we use consultants to gather speed data? When I arrived here, originally the police department conducted the radar surveys. And people started to point out, well, wait a minute, aren't you the folks that actually enforce those same speed surveys? And so I, the decision was made probably in around 2000, 2005 period that staff should not be performing those surveys to avoid any conflict of interest. You know, hire an outside professional consultant, you know, like TJKM, who can certify the data independently of staff.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we are in the homestretch here, just two major areas to cover. So the next one is this ongoing discussion between staff and the stakeholders of a signal request for the East Natomah-Gianata intersection. This dates back quite a while. So you see two aerials of the same stretch of road. First, June 2008 was prior to the construction of the Folsom Lake Crossing project. And at that point, Folsom Dam Road tied directly into Briggs Ranch Drive at a signalized intersection here at East Natomah Street. Gianata Way had been constructed and there were a few homes beginning to be constructed within the community, but it was still very lightly occupied at that point. In 2009, the roadway was realigned to eliminate the signalized intersection. This was in response to a comment on the Environmental Impact Report for the Folsom Lake Crossing Project that was submitted by several dozen residents in the Briggs Ranch community who were fearful that the construction of a four-lane roadway ending directly into their neighborhood would recreate a cut-through traffic problem that they had been experiencing in the years of the late 90s through the, up till the point where Folsom Dam Road was closed to the public. The city had actually undertaken several efforts to try to reduce cut-through traffic through Briggs Ranch Drive. You know, they tried temporary traffic circles and other devices to try to combat it. And so that's what the residents had been arguing about, that, you know, you're not, I don't want you to recreate that problem in my neighborhood. And so this was the mitigation measure that was accepted by the community and designed and constructed by the Corps of Engineers as part of the Folsom Lake Crossing Project. I think that upon, actually during the design process, the developer of La Calina had expressed concern, you know, that this looks drastically different than what it existed before. Is it gonna be safe? The Corps of Engineers concluded that while it is not as ideal as what they had had before, they did analyze it, it was designed at the appropriate design speed. And I think generally you could say that it wasn't as good as what you had before, but it was still above the minimum and should be considered adequate. But once the project was completed and traffic started to flow, we did start receiving concerns from residents in La Calina. La Calina is the small, private gated community located off of Gianata Way. Right now has about 20 something homes in it. But they had expressed concern that it was difficult for them to pull out of Gianata Way safely to make a left turn. So one of the first improvements we made in about 2011, you'll notice that prior to, the intersection was wide open. We added this gullwing design, you know, with the refuge area in about 2011. So that now a motorist coming out of Gianata Way did not have to complete a full left turn and accelerate into traffic. If they needed to, they could just, you know, reach the refuge area, wait for a safe gap in the eastbound traffic and then accelerate when they felt it was safe. And so that was a modification that was made after the project was completed. Nevertheless, the concerns by the residents have persisted over the years and it evolved into a discussion of the need for a traffic signal at this intersection. So we'll discuss how do we evaluate traffic signals? And what is the outcome for this particular intersection? The primary way of analyzing a traffic signal is through this warrant system of, it's a checklist to determine if a given intersection meets all or some of these warrants. And that can be your initial point of justification for saying, yeah, you know, you met this warrant or these five warrants. It suggests that this might be a location where traffic control is necessary, but might not necessarily be a signal. It could be, you know, some sort of modifications to turning movements, it could be a roundabout. Or you could explore other approaches to traffic safety to try to address the concerns that you're having. So for example, going back to this intersection, you know, if people are finding it uncomfortable making this movement, it's been suggested that we can go up to the signal that's right off of the exhibit here that currently prohibits U-turns due to the way it's operating. We can reintroduce U-turns at that intersection, give people another option. Instead of making the left turn out of Gianata, they can make a right turn, go up and make a U-turn safely. But, you know, this, these are the nine warrants that we typically look at. And I think it's fair to say that these represent the floor. You know, that if a intersection is evaluated and doesn't meet any warrant, then it's hard to justify expending the capital fund, the public money, you know, diverting the funds away from other projects and putting in a signal at a location that it's clearly not justified. You know, that adds another element of risk and liability to the city as well. So we really do look to these warrants as the baseline. Now, does that mean even if one warrant is met that you put in a signal? No, again, you should at least start exploring other less costly improvements first before you reach the conclusion that you need signalization. But at the very minimum, if none of the warrants are met, it's really hard for staff to justify making that a capital improvement project. So I'm gonna pause this for a second. This is an aerial shot that Kim Lee Horn performed for us to prepare for tonight's meeting. It was, it's looking at the peak hour of traffic of 4:30 to 5:30 PM. And what it's gonna show you is a couple of things. The people turning out of Gianata Way, how many of them are turning left, how many of them are turning right? I will also ask you to note where people are pausing to start their turns. You know, where they're creating their line of sight. And then I will also point out, I'm not gonna, this is a five-minute-long video, I'm not gonna let it run the whole way. But I'll point a couple of things out as it goes along. So here we are, just five minutes in, we've had one left turner. And that guy actually was able to get through pretty easily without any oncoming traffic. And it isn't until, thank you, 1:40. So I'll start a little, so watch this next vehicle coming up out of Gianata Way. I believe it's a black, there you go. This guy experiences some delay. He sits there for about a minute, waiting for a gap in traffic. And so, you know, this does represent, in this one motorist case, a very unreasonable amount of delay for them to experience. Again, if we have allowed the U-turn down at the other signal, they'd have the option, say, I'm not gonna wait here. I'll make a right turn, go down, make a U-turn at the traffic light and be on their way. But in this case, they don't have that option, they're waiting for a gap. And ultimately, it takes them about a minute before they get on their way. Let me see, where are we? Should be getting going here any second now, there you go. So again, I'm not gonna run the whole thing, but, you know, we'll fast forward toward the end. So at the end of one hour, a total of four left-turning vehicles out of Gianata Way, 14 right turn, 18 cars in the highest hour of traffic.
Yeah. When did we capture this one, Mark? What day?
Do we know, Robert, what day this was?
On Monday, last month.
Oh, last Monday?
Okay. Last month, yeah. Okay, and again, you know, I mentioned, you know, note where people are starting their turns. They're all going in front of the limit line because they're trying to create as much of a line of sight as possible to see the oncoming traffic. And that's perfectly acceptable. You know, the standard is, you know, that when you design, when you evaluate site distance is you assume that the motorist dutifully stopped at the limit line and that the driver's eye is actually eight feet back from the limit line where your driver's seat is. That's a very conservative analysis of site distance. Clearly, the reality is people creep forward, they're still not exposed to traffic, right? They're just within the crosswalk area. They could actually creep forward, you know, another, you know, six to eight feet into the bike lane and still not be exposed to vehicle traffic if they felt that they needed to open their line of sight a little bit more. So this is the site triangle that I'm talking about. This is an exhibit that Kim Lee Horn prepared, again, relative to the locations where those people were actually stopping. So you can see the line of sight. This triangle represents a clear zone that you need to have so that that motorist can decide, they can see the oncoming traffic at the design speed and make a decision whether or not there's enough time for them to accelerate, in this case, to the median refuge area. That's typically, the Caltrans standard in this case is about eight seconds. Can you see that oncoming car for eight seconds? Because that would be enough time for you to gauge their speed and then make a judgment about whether or not you can safely pull out. What I would note about this particular site triangle is that there are a couple of trees that the foliage does extend into the triangle. And so you'll see that it is a recommendation from Kim Lee Horn that we either prune or remove those trees to open up the sight line. TJKM, who, the company that actually is designing the Median Barrier Project, did a similar analysis, I think at the request of the Traffic Safety Committee and the residents. Their analysis was more conservative. They did it from, you know, as I described before, eight feet back from the line of sight. They used a higher approach speed. And it resulted in a much more significant recommendation of vegetation removal. And I think it, you know, in our conclusion, that's, it's probably excessive to clearcut this entire, you know, landscape corridor, although there are a couple that I think it would be prudent for us to remove. So let's see that again from the driver's eye. Again, you'll note that in this case, the vehicle is stopped behind the limit line. And so the graph on the left shows, the dots represent a sample of the oncoming vehicles and how much time the motorist pulling out of Gianata would have to see that approaching vehicle. The red line represents that eight-second desirable line. The green represents the average of all the data points that you see here. So in this particular case, the average time to see the approaching vehicle is above the minimum standard. But you will note that there are a few dots where you have like up to one last second to observe them. So let me just get this video going. So you, yes, sir.
Do we ever extend the bicycle lane delineations across an intersection? In order to help identify where the edge of traffic is?
We have done that in a few cases, yes. And it definitely gives that hopeful, hopefully, that additional comfort level to encourage people. So yeah, you have like another half a car length that you can pull forward and really, once you've made sure that there's no cyclist that's approaching.
Thank you.
Okay. So then I'll resume this. So, you know, again, really what you're seeing here is they'll highlight when the approaching vehicle is seen, you'll see it turn into a green dot. And it'll correspond to the graph. And then they'll follow that all the way through until that same vehicle crosses in front of your path. So you'll watch this one, and the timer's running. This particular car crosses in front of their vehicle at 9.2 seconds. So, you know, again, I would point out, you can see the trees that I'm talking about. They don't fully obstruct the line of sight, but they sure as heck don't help. So, you know, there are two or three trees there that it'd probably be prudent for us to remove of them to really open up the line of sight. And to Councilmember Kozlowski's point, we can also augment that with a little bit of additional striping here to really emphasize, you know, that you have a lot of room to pull out safely. Let's see, where am I in this? So what we've concluded from all of this is, you know, we've concluded that the site distance at this intersection is adequate. That the speeds on the corridor are generally reasonable. You know, the 85th percentiles we saw were below 50 miles per hour. We always have had the option of adding that U-turn ability up at the adjacent traffic signal. That has always been on the table and we are prepared to do it. We can have that done by the end of this month, if that is, you know, the desire of everyone. But ultimately, this is a debate, a dialogue that has been going on between staff and the residents for going on 12 years. You know, and we have never seemed to have been able to reach common ground on a signal. And yet the signal keeps coming to the forefront and prohibits us from having a meaningful dialogue of other safety improvements that might also aid this intersection. You know, one of the things that we've recently started talking about here at council are roundabouts. And the idea of a roundabout at the intersection of Folsom Lake Crossing and East Natomah to replace the traffic signal is a discussion that we would like to have. It will be a subject of the roundabout feasibility study that we're gonna undertake next year. The one grant that we received from, say, COG, you know, we are gonna include this intersection in that feasibility study as well as the intersection up on the other end of Folsom Lake Crossing at Folsom Auburn Road. And we would like to have those discussions and focus our efforts and our energies on those meaningful, meaningful traffic safety improvements. Because at the end of the day, this is the summary of all of the signal warrant analyses that have been conducted at Gianata Way. It started with me when I was in Zach's position and I was initially contacted. I did a planning level analysis of those warrants and found that none of the warrants were met. When Zach came onboard, he did a similar analysis and reached the same conclusions. That, again, did not satisfy the stakeholders. They, so we offered to have our on-call traffic consultant do a peer review of our work. So that was the Kim Lee Horn study. It turned into, it was the Blue Ravine in East Natomah Safety Assessment that they did in 2020? And again, they corroborated staff's findings. TJKM, we asked them to do a detailed analysis of all nine warrants where they actually collected the volume, you know, for each warrant. I should point out that most of these warrants actually are backed up by calculations, tables, graphs in the manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices where you have to identify that you've met minimum criteria to satisfy the warrant. And in some cases, there are multiple factors that must be met for the warrant to be satisfied. And again, in all of these cases, we have been unable to corroborate that any warrant is met at this particular intersection. And then we, the last thing we did is, since we had Kim Lee Horn assisting us in preparing for this workshop, we had them do a peer review of the TJKM analysis. we had them do a peer review of the TJKM analysis. And they verified that everything that TJKM had concluded, uh, was valid. Uh, this intersection has not met any warrant. Uh, and so therefore, we have no means of justifying a traffic signal at this location. So what, um, you know, the last point, and this is a very important point that, that is memorialized in the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, is that if you opt to put in a signal at a location where it is not justified, not only, uh, does it potentially impede the flow of traffic, but you can actually worsen traffic safety conditions. And, and this intersection is a great example. It has a, fortunately, a very light intermittent collision history o- over, over the course of the, you know, the last five years or ten years. There's almost no accidents related to the operations of the Gianata intersection. Adding a signal, as we saw earlier with the pin, with the collision diagrams, creates a location where there will be rear-end collisions uh, due to the, uh, infrequency at which this light would be triggered. Very likely that there would be an increase in red light running, which can lead to some very tragic consequences. So, you know, that, that is again memorialized in, in the state standard that be very careful where you place a traffic signal so that you don't worsen traffic safety in an effort to try to improve it. So what are we doing? Th- this slide is actually a summary of the recommendations from Kimley Horn to enhance, uh, uh, the work that we're already undertaking. Not all of these recommendations, uh, are up for consideration. You'll note, uh, that they recommend that we eliminate, uh, left turns out of Gianata Way. Uh, we are probably not going to start with that. We would instead focus on, uh, the U-turns as, you know, in implementing the U-turns up at the traffic signal. We do concur with the removal of vegetation with the line of sight. They mentioned in a few locations, uh, adding these retro reflective backplates to the traffic signal. That just makes the signal lights more visible under low-light conditions, hopefully getting somebody's attention and, and eliminating some of those low-speed rear-end collisions. They mentioned rumble strips along the edge line, uh, both along East Nautoma and along Folsom Lake Crossing. My gut reaction is that makes a lot of sense on Folsom Lake Crossing to just further help keep people in their lane. I'm a little leery about doing it on East Nautoma Street because it's in proximity to residential areas and those rumble strips are noisy. People going over things in the middle of the night, uh, that, that might be a, a noise hazard that we don't want to create. But that's, it's up for discussion. Um, and then of course, you know, we are already working on the median barrier project. And, uh, so yeah, actually I'll jump to this slide. So this, this, this is a summary of where we are right now in the suite of improvements that we're, we're undertaking to address the documented safety concerns along the corridor. You're aware of the radar feedback sign and the bollards that were put in, uh, uh, on the curve between Gianata and the traffic signal. No, those are not intended to, in, by themselves, you know, eliminate collisions. They are part of a network of improvements that hopefully will help, you know, improve driver attentiveness. Uh, we talked about the open grade asphalt course. That project actually is going to start tomorrow. And of course, the median barrier project, we successfully obtained Highway Safety Improvement Program funding. It's out for construction bid. In fact, it's my understanding that we are going to, um, open those bids this week. And so either at the next council meeting or the first one in July, we'll be bringing to you, uh, an award of contract, uh, to implement the median barrier. And then, um, you know, again, this is a phase one project based on the prior collision experience uh, that we, uh, had endured. The most recent collisions have led us to the conclusion that we need to extend the median barrier further down, uh, towards the gun range. We were fortunate that our new congressman, Congressman Kylie, uh, we submitted a proposal to him uh, for, uh, traffic safety improvement funding on Folsom Lake Crossing. And he did, uh, include our project in his recommendation. So that will represent a phase two extension of, of the median barrier. And of course, we will still update the local road safety plan. And if it identifies other corrective measures that we can go after the next round of H-SIP funding, we will absolutely incorporate those as well. We will incorporate some or, or most of the Kimley Horn recommendations. There are additional radar feedback signs, uh, that are included in the H-SIP project. And then once everything's done, uh, the condition of Folsom Lake Crossing in particular will change considerably between East Nautoma and the spillway because we will now have the median barrier. The lanes will be narrower. There will be radar feedback signs on the road. That is a, uh, significant change in the character of that road. And that is what triggers the, uh, the need for a new radar survey. And, you know, to Zach's earlier point, you know, the decision with the previous radar survey was to treat Folsom Lake Crossing as one entity from East Nautoma Street to Folsom Auburn Road. In this case, what I think we're going to do is we're going to just take the part that changes from East Nautoma to the spillway and do a survey on that portion and exclude for now the portion heading down the hill towards the bridge. We will do a updated radar survey when the median barrier is extended and once other improvements are made there. But for now, we're going to, we're going to split the radar zone on Folsom Lake Crossing into two distinct pieces. And hopefully that will result in more manageable speeds and a more enforceable speed limit on Folsom Lake Crossing. And I think I've covered everything else. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you, Mark. That was excellent.
I'm going to sit down. Uh, Zach and I are available to answer questions. Mr. Paderna, Lieutenant Emery, you know, if, if you need to call anybody up to the microphones, uh, we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
So, would the clerk please call the next, is it member, um, uh, public comments?
Any questions for the council, from the council?
Oh, I, we can ask.
And, yeah, yeah. Okay. Any questions for Mark or Zach?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mark, oh, finished drinking water. I know you talked, you know, for a long time. Thank you. It's a great presentation. Uh, if you don't mind, uh, to go to the slide twenty-seven. Yeah. Yeah. Um, I know you made a point, Mark. Now, I was visiting a friend here and the coming out, uh, it's, you're right, you know, sometimes, uh, you know, if they're going in a medium speed, what you posted, forty-five, I'm comfortable, but sometimes they go too fast. You gave an option to go here and undertake a U-turn, right? In this case, um, if you can help us, what exactly you need from us, our council, to make that happen? You said it is already on the table. That's number one. And number two, are we, I know there is a median barrier is coming from here to here. If you can explain how we can block this way? Like a one-way signal?
So, okay, so there, there's two questions there. One, one is what, what do we need to implement the U-turn? Honestly, we don't need anything, uh, from you. It, it is, it's something that we can do in-house. It, it is a minor modification to the signal controller and to one of the signal heads and, and change its sign. Really, if anything, it's, it's just every time that particular improvement has come up in dialogue with the Traffic Safety Committee and the residents, it, it doesn't seem to get any traction because the, the dialogue continues to roll back to the, the desire for a signal. So if, if it is, you know, the consensus of this council and this committee that, yeah, let, you know, let's implement that U-turn, you know, you know, we'll, we'll take the consensus. If you don't want us to do that, then tell us that. But, uh, I mean, we're prepared to do it. So your second question about the median barrier, now the median barrier does not actually extend all the way uh, to the, the end, the beginning of that left turn pocket. It, it actually starts further back, um, you know, like in that general area, like when you're starting to enter the curve. So your question was, what could we do to prohibit that left turn? Well, one, you know, we're not advising to eliminate that left turn. It seems to function pretty well, except, you know, you know, like we saw the, the one poor person who had to wait a whole minute. But when there are gaps in traffic, you know, it is, is a nice feature for these folks to have. If we, if the desire is to eliminate it, then we would probably just undertake a project to extend a concrete median straight across the whole intersection. You know, we, we could probably still leave the left turn into Gianata. Uh, but, you know, we could, you know, just build a concrete barrier that prohibits the left out. Again, we're, we're not advising that and I, I don't think it's a necessary improvement.
Got it. Thank you, um.
Any other questions? Comments?
I guess I do. When, do you have to point your thing out? I don't know how to use this. Push the button. Okay. So to eliminate the left turn out, now obviously I don't think the left turn in makes sense to eliminate. It seems not to be an issue. So you would put a barrier like right here? So they can't turn like kind of down by Starbucks, uh, by, off of Blue Ravine and, uh, East Nautoma?
Yeah, it, it just.
Can't turn left and you can't turn right in certain areas?
Yeah, that, that's probably a good example. It's, it's just a six-foot-high, you know, concrete curb with, with, um, six inches.
I was like, that's really, really high.
I think this is water in here. But yeah, a six-inch-high curb, uh, with a flat, uh, surface, um, you know, across the width of that, um, that, that currently striped island, uh, very similar. Yeah, I, I think the example you cited down by the Starbucks uh, over by East Nautoma Blue Ravine, that it, it looked very similar to that, yes.
Um, and so that would be fairly simple, not cost prohibitive to do. I think, um, what I've been hearing as of late is that is something with the barrier going in, um, that they're really concerned about the safety. So I think there is a lot of, of movement and they would be interested in the U-turn and, um, right turn only out of there. I don't know what the pushback would be as far as a U-turn into, uh, into, off of that road onto East Nautoma as far as other people coming off East Nautoma. Um, have you heard any pushback on that? Like, you know, like I'm going to go home tonight and I'm going to turn right? Even if it's a red light? The traffic patterns there? I mean, is there?
No, I, actually, Kimley Horn did analyze what the intersection level of service and operations would be like with and without the U-turn and found it's, it's perfectly acceptable. You know, I drive that way every day. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm certainly willing to wait at a no right turn on red indication while that U-turn is going. Uh, you know, it, it's, it should be a fairly short phase of the, of that signal and shouldn't impact operations very much. My suggestion, uh, for the consideration of, of the joint meeting here is, that certainly it sounds like there's a favorable response to modifying the signal and allowing the U-turn. My suggestion would be that we wait on closing that left turn out of Gianata until the median barrier is complete and let's see what we're actually dealing with. Because TJKM did analyze that sight distance. They concluded that the median barrier is not going to impede sight distance. But, you know, I, I think the proof is, you know, and let, let's see what it looks like on day one. If it does look like it's, it's a problem, then we implement a, a concrete project to, to eliminate the left turn. But I, I'm just suggesting that maybe we don't jump on that right away. Let's, let's wait and see.
I think that could be a part, thank you for that feedback, but I think it could be a part of the discussion. Hopefully we hear from the committee as well. Because, you know, turning out of there, um, turning left out of there, I can't imagine even with this, the, the barriers that we were talking about earlier, Mark, um, at a different time. You know, when the traffic is at its best, meaning it's fastest through there, it, that is a quick, quick left turn. So the other concern I have, just since we have this up, is decelerating right here. So I did this, the first time I attempted it, I went past it because I had a car right behind me and I couldn't decelerate fast enough to turn right into there without risking just going, huh? And so I just, I did it a different day. Um, there is no deceleration lane. That is like a bike path right there. Um, for a car to slow down to turn right, well, I, I mean, these neighbors know, you know, when they start waiting on Blue Ravine, they're going to turn their blinker on and, and alert the people behind them. But this seems pretty unsafe. Um, is there something we can do there to create a deceleration lane? So they can turn in right without risking a rear end, not for them necessarily, but for the people along that road?
Uh, yes, there, there certainly are always projects available to us. I mean, it would be a little bit more of a considerable capital improvement project to demolish the curb, uh, create a, uh, deceleration taper and, and then reconstruct the curb further back, like, like maybe all the way back to where the sidewalk is. It could be done. Uh, I would note that this is a very common approach for such low-volume intersections, you know, that when a, a development is studied, the community development department or the traffic engineers that are doing their studies will determine how many people are making a turning movement at, at a side street. And that generally drives how significant of a, uh, right turn element that you would put in. You know, we have examples where, yeah, you do just a, a taper that is probably long enough for one car to, to slow down and make a turn, which is, I think, what you're describing. You know, if you have more significant volume of right turns, you, you build a whole turn pocket, right? Where it goes further back. So, um, you know, we could study it. We could certainly at least come up with what the potential cost would be. Uh, and, and that's.
And I don't know if there is a problem. That was on, that was someone to mention it and so I was paying attention. And then I just felt it and so I wanted to ask about that.
Very similar situation, uh, right out here in front of City Hall, the two driveways that, that either gets you into City Hall or into the back parking lot. You have to slow down in the bike lane in some, you know, lower speed road, right? The same circum- circumstance.
The worst is trying to turn into Coffee Republic off of Folsom Auburn Road.
Yes.
Somebody behind you not wanting you to slow down.
Yeah, that's true.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Um, I'll make a comment real quick. Um, I'm a hundred percent in favor of, of putting the U-turn in there. And, and I don't know if this is a real phenomenon, but I, I kind of feel like, not just in Folsom, but statewide, nationwide, whatever, that we kind of have over-engineered things to, the more we engineer, the dumber the drivers get, right? And, and the worse drivers they get. And I actually don't think that we ought to eliminate the left turn out of there. You know, let people make a decision. And, um, the best analogy I can give is when I leave Empire Ranch Golf Course, I can turn left there to go home, but I never do because I don't think it's safe. Uh, and I don't, I wouldn't say that it's not safe, but I'm not comfortable doing it. And so I always turn right and go to the stoplight and make a U-turn. And I, I just think some of that has to be the driver's responsibility to make a decision on their own about what they're comfortable with and what they're not. So.
I have one more thing. I've, I've, it's kind of, it's kind of a question. Um, one of the things that I heard is when that light is red there on East Nautoma, that sometimes when people are speeding to get on, to turn left or right on, when people come around that corner and they're not paying attention, because that's the problem, right? Sometimes there's backups, sometimes there's accidents through there and they're not, you know, they're not major fatalities or anything like that, but it, it has been an issue, um, apparently. And what if we put an alert signal, alerting that, you know, you see those all over, alerting that there's a signal ahead? I mean, is that, is that very costly? I don't, I don't have a... And you know what I'm, am I saying the right thing? An alert signal?
Yeah, a signal warning.
Signal, no, I, probably, probably around there.
An advisory sign saying there's a signal ahead?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could consider that and it, it might be part of the barrier rail project. I'll have to double check to see if that's an improvement included in that project already. They are common. We have one on Folsom Auburn, traveling southbound near the damn road. Symbol device, um, it's not actuated or activated by. Symbol device. It's not actuated or activated by the signal, so it's, it's a steady blinking light, but it does draw your attention in those conditions that you described, where the, the attention level is probably lower than it should be.
Okay. Thank you.
Zach, a question for you. Some of these signal warning lights can be active. So, if the traffic light at East Nataoma is about to turn yellow, then the light could let you know and start flashing at that point?
There is an option for that as well. We, we did ask Kim Lee Horn to evaluate that, and their recommendation was that because it is actuated, the expectation is that it's gonna work all the time. And when in reality, that, that, those conditions aren't always met for those warning lights to flash when they should be flashing, you're, you're adding a different element that could fail in the system. So, the recommendation was not to actuate a warning sign in advance of that. It was to have a steady, steady warning sign.
Okay, thank you. And while we're on this slide, I'm gonna say something that I don't think is gonna be very popular with a lot of the people here tonight. But if we're gonna make a deceleration lane, or consider doing that, rather than going to the expense of tearing up all that sidewalk and reconfiguring that bike lane that's up there, or the pedestrian pathway, if we eliminated, don't shoot me, folks, if we eliminated the left turn in and the left turn out, we could straighten out that yellow roadway and actually continue a barricade possible consideration, which would then widen the road and allow us to create a deceleration lane without tearing up the sidewalk. Does that make any sense?
Yeah. So, so you're suggesting that if we eliminate the left turn in and the refuge area at Gianada, that we can reclaim some of that space and realign the through lanes? That would probably have to extend considerably farther in both directions, you know, at, at the design speed that, that we're using out there. There might not be enough pavement further down the road to really make that work.
And I'm not necessarily suggesting it. I'm just saying that maybe that's something we should look at and consider.
Yeah. I think it's something we could do a concept-level striping plan. I just, my gut reaction is that it, it, we wouldn't be able to taper the lanes back in and get them properly lined up further down the road, because the road is just not wide enough. Unless we make the lanes narrower, that might be a possibility. So, it's something we can, we can, you know, sketch out and see if it's feasible, and, and maybe run that past the, the committee at some future date.
Because if they're gonna make the new U-turn, which would allow the residents there to have a way of heading eastbound, although it would be inconvenient, it would make a right in only into Gianada. And I know that wouldn't be popular, but I'm just trying to think of some out-of-the-box thoughts there. Thank you. So, that's just one of many things I'd like, at least, to have a look at.
Okay. Any other comments or questions before we go to public comments?
I have a couple of questions. When the site council, site council, Traffic Safety Committee voted six to one to recommend to the council that they look at this back in 2021 and 2022, was a packet presented with their rationale, and was that provided to the city council?
No, it was not. There are, that was just one example of several cases where the recommendations of the Traffic Safety Committee do not get implemented. You know, there are numerous examples where, when the committee has reviewed, say, a development project and recommended conditions of approval on a project, and then subsequently, community development staff or the planning commission determined there was no nexus to require the developer to implement those recommendations. And so, they oftentimes did not make it out of staff review. There are examples, I can recall, of the committee unanimously recommending certain types of law enforcement, you know, radar survey, red light running, even pedestrian stings, that ultimately, the police chief determined that he either didn't have the staff for it, or that it couldn't be done safely, or for whatever rationale. And so, again, examples where committee recommendations are not feasible in the minds of, of, of that department. And, and I can think of several examples of capital improvement, safety improvement projects, again, recommended unanimously by the Traffic Safety Committee, which includes the concurrence of your traffic engineer, that either, you know, did not make it past the Public Works Director or the city manager at the time, because they were either deemed to be impractical, or, or unfunded, or that there were other improvements that, that the policymakers felt were more appropriate.
And is that codified in the municipal code, that you have the, or that staff has the ability to prevent our advice from getting to the city council?
No, I don't believe it is. But that has been the practice for the past 20 years, and it's certainly something that if the city council determined that they want all recommendations of the Traffic Safety Committee to come to them, they, they have that right. Or if they would just simply like a report out on all Traffic Safety Committee conclusions or the minutes, you know, those can be forwarded to the city council at any time.
I'll interject here. The, I've been on the TSC now for a little over two years, two and a half years roughly, and I know in the audience tonight is two previous set-large members of TSC. To, in my recollection, there's only been one time that we've had a nearly unanimous vote that was not presented to the council properly, at least. Virtually every other time in discussion at TSC level, we have agreed almost entirely with city recommendations of Zach and Mark. And so, I think what you're talking about was some of these kind of crazy ideas from many years ago. But it's just, I haven't seen it yet with this TSC or the previous one.
The Phase One median barrier. One of your stated comments was that the fatality on Folsom Lake Crossing was alarming to you, and that you wanted to take measures to mitigate that segment. Why is it that the Phase One median barrier does not cover that section?
Because the accidents that we're referring to happened after the local road safety plan was implemented, after the HCP grants were submitted and awarded, which, which is why we are now looking at updating the local road safety plan and applying for future funding to, to mitigate the new, new collisions.
And how much money was spent post-February 23 on preparing for this presentation? How much did you pay your consultant to get yet again another update?
We executed a contract for approximately $18,500 for our on-call traffic engineering services of Kim Lee Horn in preparation for this meeting.
In February of '23, we, the Traffic Safety Committee conceded that a signal at Gianada should be taken off the table. And we asked, if a signal is not a traffic calming device, what is? So, can you speak to why you felt we needed to go through the traffic signal issue again? Was that merely to kind of put a fork in it relative to the discussion and the vote that was taken by the previous Traffic Safety Committee?
Joanne, my request to the engineering staff and the city manager included having a final discussion of the traffic signal at Gianada, so that we could put it in context of all of the improvements that are necessary on that corridor.
The agenda for this entire evening was based on the council meeting, and just laboriously going through everything that was said by the council members, and making sure we hit all those points, and it included the Gianada signal.
A couple of things. Just for the record, Mr. Ackerman, you just stated something that due to all the discussions at the TSC level regarding the signal at Gianada, it distracted you from moving forward with any other ideas. To my recollection, at the TSC, we, we were never really presented with any other concepts at the TSC level. I've had discussions with you personally, and actually agreed with you, that the U-turn and the right out only would be great. But I don't think it's really fair to say that we've been so distracted by this light that we haven't had any other ideas or concepts.
Scott, I will direct you to watch the video of your December meeting, in which Zach specifically stated, is the U-turn still up for discussion, or is it still on the table? And someone from the audience said, no, we want a traffic signal. And that's an example of what I'm citing, of, you know, we, we would like to, to have a, a open discussion about how we can actually address safety issues on this corridor. And, and hopefully, you know, now that we've all agreed that, that the signal is, is not a part of that program, the committee can move forward and, and work effectively.
Right. Which is ultimately the reason I pushed for this meeting tonight. But somebody yelling from the audience, or whatever, doesn't actually represent the committee's discussion points, I don't think. If you could pull up, just for my question here, I think it's slide, the one that shows the overview of Folsom Lake Crossing, I think that's slide 23?
That one work?
The one maybe, the one that shows-
The pin map?
A little more, yeah, the pin map, it would work.
I missed it.
Yeah, that one.
Or that one.
No, the one with the accidents on there, that's fine. Can you show with a laser pointer or some other device where the current planned barrier terminates at each location, just for the sake of the audience and the council's benefit?
Yeah. So, the, the one at East Nataoma and Folsom Lake Crossing will begin just prior to the left turn pocket into Gianada, right? So, the current left turn pocket, it will terminate just prior to the left turn pocket from East Nataoma onto East Nataoma. The one continuing up Folsom Lake Crossing will terminate just at the spillway signal, right up there.
Okay. So, before the straightaway begins?
This straightaway, Scott?
Yes.
Yeah, it will, yeah, this would be considered part of the Phase Two project.
Okay. And what, at this point, is your best assessment is the likelihood of the Kevin Kiley Grant money for coming through? Was it looking good?
Yeah, we have no, no reason to believe that that will not get funded. It was in his list of recommended projects. The only, you know, these congressionally-directed spending, or earmarks, as they used to be called, have only recently been reinstated, so we don't have a lot of experience with how well the money flows. The one example we have is that Congressman Bera, our previous congressman, secured some funding for us for the Riley Street sidewalk project. And that money did get approved in the federal budget, and it is, it is available to us when we finish the design and move into construction. So, that's the only data point I have for context. But if that's the trend, then yeah, we, we're in good shape to get Congressman Kiley's funding.
Okay, excellent. Do we have solid cost estimates now on the barricade that is planned between this S-turn up here, as I call it, and the Gianada to the light area? It was previously estimated at $234,000 for East Nataoma to Gianada, and $367,000 Folsom Lake Barrier estimate on Phase One. Is that, are those estimates still pretty solid?
We will know that for certain when we open bids later this week, and hear what the, the contractors are, are offering to construct that project. And we can share that information with you once we have it.
Okay, thank you. I had requested a couple of times at TSC level for some estimates for barricades continuing on what we are now gonna call Phase Two, or even Phase Three, and have yet to see anything on that. Does anybody have anything in the works for getting estimates on those?
I believe that Ryan Chance provided that number during the discussion of the project update at a Traffic Safety Committee meeting. If not, then I can certainly get you that information.
Okay. Yeah, not to my knowledge there.
Sorry, let me also add, Scott, that when we update the local road safety plan this year, and I'm presuming that this corridor is gonna be identified through that process as in need of corrective measures, part of the scope of that plan will be to get a engineering estimate for the cost of the Phase Two barrier. So, we might not be able to give you a number right away, but it will be generated for us as part of the LRSP update.
Thank you for that. The, if you could pull up, I'm sorry to make you get up, Zach. If you could pull up slide 34, just like for the benefit of the audience and the council to have a little bit better explanation on what we're referred to tonight as rumble strips. Is that, for my knowledge too, is that if a car drifts out of the lane, that they get the buzz on their tires? Or is it more like the bumps that you approach in some areas of the world where you make a lot of noise as you're approaching a light to get your attention, or an intersection?
It would be the first example you provided, the edge line rubble strip. So, when you deviate from the, the lane, you encounter those. It's a tactical feedback issue, so you can actually feel it in your steering wheel.
Okay, thank you. I've got a whole bunch of questions and a whole bunch of solutions, but I'll save those for a little bit later. And at some point, Madam Mayor, are we gonna have citizens have a chance to put some input in?
Yes, we're waiting. I'm waiting for all the comments and questions.
And then we'll have another chance to get more questions. Thank you.
All right. All right, let's open up public comments. Are there any requests to speak?
I have four speaker cards. First speaker, Loretta Hedinger, followed by Beth Kelly. Terry Sorensen, item 14.
And these are item for items, number 14, correct? Loretta, are you speaking to this item?
I'm not speaking to this item.
Okay.
I know you have to.
Loretta, form an opinion right now.
I'm not qualified on this one. Sorry.
Sorry, Loretta. Let me check. But I don't think I have any.
Are there any, has anybody submitted?
This is 15, isn't it?
Mark? Mark, did you submit a card?
Okay, Mark McClellan is the only speaker I have. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Mark.
Okay, thank you very much for getting an opportunity to address everyone. I think you guys really put together a great workshop, okay? And really appreciate all the effort by Zach and Mark over here. And of course, the Traffic Safety Committee is, I think, doing a spectacular job. So, again, thank you for bringing this all together. I think most of you know me and our resident group. We- We've been working on this issue for, well, the safety issue on East Natomah, primarily centered around Gianada, for well over four years. And so we've had a lot of interaction, a lot of discussion. And one of the things that came up during those four years, four-plus years, is we often came across that, well, we're not traffic engineers, okay? We're not traffic engineers themselves, you know? What kind of credibility do we have to make any suggestions or have opinions or whatever? So as of this year, we actually contracted with a engineering, traffic engineering service certified by the state of California, okay? And we asked them to review the situation that we have in East Natomah and specifically at Gianada. And we received a report, I believe almost everybody here has received a copy of that. And there's a lot of good things in there, but I kind of wanted just to tee up two of them specifically. One of them has to do with level of service out of Gianada and the grade, I guess you would call it, that you get for level of service. It can be multiple, A, B, C, D. The level of service out of Gianada turning onto East Natomah is a level F, which is not good. And when you have a level F, that means that people get frustrated and they do risky things that can lead to a very unsafe situation. So that's the first one. So we have an unsafe situation turning out of, this is either left or right. Of course, it's much worse left, but left or right, level F, okay? The other one is, is that we have the left turn refuge area, I wish we still had that slide up there, but that was reviewed for line of sight. And line of sight in that refuge area is inadequate and unsafe. And it's not only inadequate and unsafe for those making a left turn out of Gianada onto East Natomah, it's unsafe for the cars traveling east.
Mark, I just want to keep your eye on the clock.
Okay, so I'm going to like wrap it up very quickly. We have an unsafe situation. I was very, very impressed with the direction that Mark took this discussion in because at this point in time, our citizen group is very much open to getting a U-turn at East Natomah. In fact, we implore you to implement that as quickly as you possibly can.
Mark, the time.
Okay. I'm done.
Thank you, Mark.
Mark, I have a question for you, just to... Clarifying question. The sight distance issue you were referring to is actually, once you are in the left turn pocket in the middle of the road behind you, correct?
Yes.
So you're talking about back into the curve?
Backing back.
Okay, gotcha, not the one that is depicted here.
Not this one.
It's the one going the other direction.
Coming the other direction.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We have one more request to speak?
No, that's all.
They didn't, Bob?
Oh, oh, okay. You put item 14.
Come on up, Bob.
I confused you with that. Bob Delp?
Hi, I'm Bob Delp, resident of the historic district. I was on the Traffic Safety Committee the two years prior to this current term. My first couple of months there was when the first local road safety plan came before us and we were working on that. And one of the things that I heard tonight and everyone heard and I think is aware of is that driver behavior is a huge issue when it comes to road safety in Folsom. And we can do a lot of engineering things, and I think Mark and Zach put a lot of thought into what goes on on our roads and how to design them to be as safe as possible. And I think the Traffic Safety Committee certainly and the residents near Gianada are very concerned and I think the discussion is valuable and I'm glad that you guys are having this meeting and talking these things through. In the local road safety plan, one of the key elements for safety was enforcement. And there are a few elements in there that are basically asking for zero tolerance, for law enforcement to use zero tolerance policies when they're enforcing speed limits, DUIs. I have a ton of respect for our police department. All my interactions with the police officers are, they're just super professional, thoughtful, well-intended. I think they should write more tickets. So I want to share that with you and then also say that I do have some concerns with the idea of rumble strips along the shoulder of bike lanes that can be a real concern. There's benefits too, but I think, don't do that, don't make those decisions lightly. And I would say also, don't take up the bike lanes, don't block bike lanes by assuming vehicles can pull into them and use those as their place to park or sit while they look for traffic coming either way. I think there are bikes that use East Natomah and that bike lane needs to be protected. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers.
Okay, no more speakers, okay. Well, that, we can close the public comment section and come back to us for deliberation.
So piggybacking off his comment about bicycles in that corridor, can we bring up that slide that had the then and now? That one. So there's a section of old dual-use that you can see there in the gray on the far side. That's an old section and then it joins the sidewalk. One of the concerns I've heard from the residents is that encourages bicycles to be traveling in the wrong direction, coming at them at Gianada. And so they're looking for bicycle traffic on their left and all of a sudden a bike comes whizzing past them on the right. Also, that particular gray section of old bike trail is historically, in some of the incidences, where vehicles end up when they leave the roadway. And the concern is that at some point, if we don't obliterate that old trail, we're going to have a mom and her baby out there walking and a car's going to take them out. My recommendation would be that all bicycle traffic must cross East Natomah at the signal and get on the correct direction for proceeding through that corridor. And that we put some sort of signage where the sidewalk starts, because certainly the residents are, should be able to use that sidewalk, but some sort of signage that ins, you know, the bicycles are not permitted to come in that direction.
I do have good news for you, though.
So eliminating the sidewalk or one-way traffic on the sidewalk?
I don't want to eliminate the white sidewalk, I want to eliminate the gray pavement between that sidewalk and the signal.
Okay, so where I'm pointing, you want the sidewalk to terminate right here and not have a connection from here to the intersection or the remainder of the bike trail system?
Or re-engineer that in such a way that it's farther off the roadway so that it's not as hazardous to people on it.
Okay, gotcha. While we're talking about bike traffic, and this is, I think, related to what Mr. Delp brought up and a question I asked earlier, the striping across the entrance to La Colina, this is actually pretty wide when you're driving right here. And because the center stripes kind of get obliterated and the edge stripe gets obliterated, this is a little bit of a no man's land jump where it's not completely clear where the lanes are. I happen to drive the stretch of road at least twice every day. So if there was, if it doesn't seem like it's going to add to the complexity of bicycle traffic, I would like to see the bike lane like sort of extend across that intersection to delineate the right edge of the westbound, westbound lane, yeah. And I think that also serves the purpose we talked about earlier where it allows people to know how far they actually can nose out without being in the traffic lane in order to, if we keep the left turn pocket, turn safely into the left turn pocket. So I don't know if anybody has any opinions about that, but let's definitely put the U-turn in and I think that would be a useful, inexpensive improvement.
Yeah, that's certainly something we can include in the Berrail project as they restripe the road. They're already out there mobilized. We have used, as Mark mentioned, we have used that in other locations for this specific purpose. It is a tool in our toolbox for this.
Yeah, and I will add my thanks to the staff for the excellent preparation. Thank you, Kim Lee Horn for chipping in. And Representatives Goddard, Bailey, and Brauch, thank you so much for your service on the Traffic Safety Committee. Mr. Delp, for your past service there. This is an important topic and it's nice to be able to daylight the complexity of all of it, which is why I requested this in the first place, so thank you.
Can I address Traffic Safety Committee member Brauch's question about the sidewalk?
So we have previously installed a directionality sign prior to the intersection of Folsom Lake Crossing in East Natomah for that southbound traffic on the trail, advising them to use the signal as a crossing instead of continuing along the sidewalk in the wrong direction. We've also included a trail end sign at the terminus of the trail to indicate this is the beginning of a sidewalk and you must adhere to it as such, right? We cannot prohibit riding on sidewalks in this area. We ultimately have to rely on the education of the cyclist to ride properly. We have provided that in terms of signage for them to adhere to that, so...
They're gone.
Oh, they're gone? Then we'll...
Accidents have taken those out months and months and months.
Cars have crossed over the bike trail and taken those...
We will certainly replace them as soon as we are notified, absolutely. We have an excellent sign team that replaces signs every day. Please reach out to me if you have missing signage in anywhere in the city, we can certainly replace them.
Okay, so with that, sounds like you guys have direction. All right, well, then I won't...
Madam Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, I've got a few more items I'd like to bring up.
Could I just interject real quick, Mr. Bailey? I apologize. Does the mayor, do you want to entertain a motion for one of your colleagues to waive the 10:30 rule?
Yes.
So moved.
I'm sorry, I'll be as fast as I can.
Wait, hold on a second, wait a second. All right.
We're not expecting you to get to 10:30 yourself.
Yeah.
So would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers, Rorba? No. Aquino?
Yes.
Chalim Sherla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes. Okay, back to you, Scott.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to point out a couple of thoughts here. I've got some ideas for the here and now and moving forward for improvement for everybody. Before we go any further, I want to thank staff also. This was an absolutely incredible report you've prepared tonight and Kim Lee Horn as well. I really appreciate that and I appreciate the council, city manager, and mayor for allowing this to be a joint session tonight. So I really, truly mean that. This was very educational for me and I hope for the citizens here. But a couple of comments. As a TFC member now for a couple of years now, the absolute number one requested item by citizens at almost every single event we have, it's, use an old man's term, it's a broken record, is the lack of staffing at the police department. The traffic division has been understaffed. Efforts since Councilman Roger Gaylord days, from my recollection, to obtain more motor officers have been ongoing. Since then, commercial vehicle enforcement officer has been suspended, at least to my knowledge, and motor officers are fewer, all while the boundaries and population have increased. Just a couple of ideas on that, short of readdressing the budget, which of course is out of my purview, is to, I remember when I was an officer with Folsom PD, there were several occasions when they did a joint task force with Citrus Heights PD and they brought in a bunch of motorcycle units to address problem areas and hit greater enforcement for purposes that were very beneficial. And our officers in turn went and worked with Citrus Heights PD, to my knowledge, and the chief can address that or Lieutenant Emery can address that. I know Elk Grove PD, I have good friends with an officer in that department, they currently have two sergeants, nine total motors, and two detectives, 11 staff members for traffic safety or traffic division of their department. I could go into other stats from other agencies I've researched too, but I would like to see that reinstated, is to see some joint task force going. And I'd love to see a commercial vehicle enforcement eventually be restarted.
Do you want us to comment on that?
Sure.
Lieutenant Emery, do you want to, because I believe we've done a couple of those joint efforts, at least in my time here, but maybe you could comment on that with Citrus Heights?
Chris Emery, Lieutenant, Folsom Police Department, Madam Mayor, City Manager, Council. Yes, we still do those. We actually have a regional team. Sergeant Galovich meets with them monthly and they do still go and do regional enforcement efforts going from one city to the next.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the number one thing we get from citizens and we always have to explain them at the TSC level as the buffer between the council and the citizens that we just don't have enough staffing here for that purpose. Because everybody wants a cop on their corner for every stop sign on every speeding issue. Another idea I had, well, just out of tonight's conversation, was that Kim Lee Horn is suggesting apparently removing or trimming the foliage to improve the line of sight, but I haven't seen any discussion tonight on the barricade line of sight other than Mr. Racabane's comment to kind of wait and see what happens on that. But obviously, that's going to affect their line of sight on left turns out of their... Another idea I wanted to present tonight for consideration is this, whatever we want to call it, Phase Two barricade. When I joined the Traffic Safety Committee, my number one goal was to put a barricade all the way across Folsom Lake Crossing. And, you know, I knew that was a big leap to have that occur, but based on the crash data and the serious data and the Highway 50 North that we've addressed already as of this corridor here, the city staff has stated in some conversations I've had with them that they want the barricades, of course, have to be engineered. And Mr. Racabane has recommended that he wants it, you know, a permanence to it where they're either countersunk into the asphalt or put in place with cement. I'm going to suggest tonight that we research the temporary construction-style K-rails, also known as Jersey barriers. I've done a little bit of research online, we're looking, what I've seen online is we're looking at about $20 per foot. And my rough estimates are we're talking about a cost of about $80,000 in materials to go across what we'll now call Phase Two of the barricade. I would love to see the city consider putting up the temporary K-rails, which weigh about two tons each for the 10-foot lengths, they're also available in 20-foot lengths and 24-foot lengths. I would love to see that go forward across the rest of Folsom Lake Crossing and put in place as soon as possible, like now, as soon as we can. When grant funds are available in the future, we can move these out of the way and put a permanent structure more to the effect of what Mr. Racabane suggested. And then keep these K-rails and move them out of the area and do not put them in storage, but rather than put them on the next identified trouble area, which could be Iron Point Road or Blue Ravine or Folsom Boulevard. So I would recommend the city figure out a way to purchase these and consider, at least get some estimates on cost on that. I'm told they can be put up in a very short timeframe. And additionally, we've talked tonight and we showed on the map all the crash data in the turn coming westbound out of, approaching the light at East Natomah. And a whole bunch of those crashes have been documented tonight. We have absolutely no idea how many are unreported, but there's been a lot. And most of those crashes, to my knowledge, have jumped the curb and gone across the bike lanes. and gone across the bike lane that Ms. Brousch was just referring to, and ended up in the weeds. And I think it's really vitally important that we consider putting some sort of barricade on the north side of that roadway also to protect the bicyclist and the pedestrians in that heavily-used area. These K-rails could also be positioned in those locations and then moved when we get a more permanent rail. And that is it. Moving to solutions, my number one solution suggested tonight is to do roundabouts. That being out of the question, at least for a short term, is to install K-rails. My number three is, as I think we've already addressed through the recommendations, are better signage. I requested this over two years ago, announcing a reduced speed ahead with flashing lights as you're coming down from 55 to 45 zone. Number four is rate our feedback signs, which we have addressed tonight. And number five would be, as I think the plan is, although we didn't really discuss it, is rain, lane narrowing and installing what's known as channelizers or delineators to grab the attention of drivers. So hopefully, all those things are in the plan, and I throw them out to the council for suggestions for moving forward to recommendations to staff. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. We're good? Any comments, questions? We're good? Good, all right. Well, I guess that adjourns the joint meeting, and we will now reconvene the regular city council meeting. And I see our Assistant City Clerk in the back. And... So she will now come and present the final tally.
Should she just do it at the FHDA meeting tomorrow in 10 hours?
And she will provide a tally of the yes/no votes, and the question is, does a majority protest exist?
This is for item number 13, going back to public hearing, item number 13.
Good evening, Jennifer.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jennifer Jimenez. I'm the Assistant City Clerk, and we have completed the canvas of votes for the historic Folsom P. bid. A total of 33 ballots were received by the close of the public hearing. As described earlier by staff, the city council may proceed to renew the district if a majority protest does not exist. Ballots were tallied on a weighted assessment basis according to the proportional financial obligation of the affected property. And the results of the ballot tally are as follows. Yes votes are 87.75%, and no votes are 12.25%. Therefore, based on the yes vote rate of 87.75%, a majority protest does not exist, and city council may consider approval of resolution number 11041. You may proceed with the vote, and staff and the consultant will be available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions or comments before we go to motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 11041.
I'll second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Rorba? Aquino?
Yes.
Chell and Cherla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes. Wow, today's, so much back and forth. Okay, would the clerk please call the next item?
The next item is public hearing, item number 14, appeal by Bob Delp of decisions by the Historic District Commission approving the demolition of the cabin at 608 Bridge Street and determination that the project is exempt from CEQA.
Good evening, Desmond.
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and members of the city council. I'm Desmond Parrecton. I'm Desmond Parrecton, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. Tonight, we're hearing the appeal of the Historic District Commission's approval of the demolition of the cabin located on the property at 608 Bridge Street. Just wanted to go over the appeal hearing protocol with you, so the mayor will open the hearing. Staff will give our presentation, which I'm about to do. Then the appellant has 10 minutes to give their presentation. The project applicant has 10 minutes as well, and then public comments are three minutes per person. The applicant has, or the appellant, I'm sorry, has five minutes for their remarks, and then the project applicant has five minutes for their closing remarks. City staff can then ask any questions of staff or either the appellant or the project applicant. Then the hearing is closed, and then the council will deliberate and make a decision. One thing that I did want to go over with you at the beginning of the hearing is that it was not stated in the appeal letter, kind of the, how the appellant, Mr. Delp, how his property rights would be affected as a result of the demolition. So the code states in 1752, 710, that a permit applicant, permetee, or another person whose property rights may be affected, is dissatisfied with the decision made by the Historic District. Such persons may appeal to the city council. So before we proceed with the hearing, the question before you is whether Mr. Delp has standing to file an appeal on this matter. Again, the letter did not state how he's, he or his property, his material affected by this. He's not a neighbor. He's approximately .2 miles away from the cabin. So, wanted to bring that issue to your attention and ask you how you wish to proceed on this.
All right. So before you go, you proceed with your presentation. We will now open the public hearing? Okay.
Yeah.
If I may, Madam Mayor, so I think this is a jurisdictional question, whether Mr. Delp is qualified to even file this appeal. And this question is raised by the project applicant. So the project applicant, to be fair, follows what the municipal code says as well, and raised the issue that Mr. Delp is not qualified to even file an appeal because his property rights may not even be affected by the commission's decision to allow this structure to be demolished. So that's the question. If I can be a little bit more helpful, the term "property rights" pertains to a person's legal authority to use his or her property. And that can be manifested in many ways, such as using the property, leasing the property, renting it out, remodeling, or doing nothing at all. It's difficult to picture without Mr. Delp explaining how his property rights are affected to make this kind of determination, because I want to also give him the benefit of the doubt that he may actually have a legitimate property rights at stake due to the commission's approval to demolish this structure. For example, if he's able to demonstrate that demolishing this structure would cause him not to be able to use his property, rent it out, or, you know, access it because somehow the easement goes away, I don't know, I don't know where he lives, then perhaps. But it is entirely up to him to demonstrate that to the council. He doesn't say that in the appeal, but he may have a legitimate interest in appealing the commission's decision to the council. The commission is sitting as a judge, I'm sorry, the city council is sitting as a judge in this quasi-judicial proceeding, so it's your decision to make, it's within your authority to determine whether he has standing or not to file an appeal. So that's, this is the initial jurisdictional question the council has to answer, to be fair, to both sides. So that we're not ignoring his appeal in case he does have standing or the applicant's objection to his ability to file an appeal.
Okay. So, since this is the first time, do we now, at this point, ask Mr. Bob Delp to?
I believe so.
Come up to the podium and answer the question?
It is his appeal after all. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, Bob.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Bob Delp. Thank you for this opportunity to express my concerns as a property owner and resident of the city of Folsom. The applicant's May 30th email to the city council stated, "Mr. Delp's appeal of the Historic District Commission's decision should be dismissed outright because he does not meet the fundamental requirement in the city's municipal code of having a property right that may be affected by the HDC's decision." "I'm a citizen of the city of Folsom. I reside and own property in the Historic District. My right to use and enjoy and profit and benefit from my property is substantially influenced by the laws of the city of Folsom, and in particular, Title 17 of the Folsom Zoning Code, especially Section 1752 that pertains to the Historic District. Decisions that are made by the Historic District Commission and the city council related to implementing the Folsom Municipal Code and affecting the historic character and quality of the Historic District and its resources affect my right and my ability to use my property and to benefit from the property that I own in the city." And I prepared these remarks and was going to submit them, but then I decided I don't need to do that as part of tonight's hearing. This will be more efficient and focused on whether this cabin deserves to be demolished or not at this time. And I appreciate the question. I think it's a fair, arguably fair issue to raise. If the council were to decide that I don't have standing to bring this appeal, one, we will end up in a discussion of whether the Historic District Commission has the authority to even make a final approval decision, which I've raised before and I won't go into now. But we would also be putting the rest of the cities, the rest of the Historic District residents in a situation where they also have no right to appeal many things that happen in the Historic District and the Historic District Commission decides on. I think you need to make a responsible decision on this matter, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just extending the logic of your statement just now, couldn't you make the argument that all residents of Folsom draw value and enjoyment of their property because of the existence of our Historic District? And thus, the argument you just made would apply to anybody that lives next door to Vista Delago or in Natomah Station?
Absolutely. I would support the right of any resident of the city of Folsom to appeal the decision of the Historic District Commission to the city council.
Okay, so then to the city attorney, we generally speaking have noticing provisions that have distance or proximity requirements to them that are, I'm guessing, based on some state law or standard practice. How does, if you overlay those concepts, what is the outer limit of the boundary of interest? Because you can be pretty far from the cabin location and still actually be in the Historic District, and then you could be very far and still be in Folsom.
There is, that's a good question, Councilmember Kozlowski. There's a difference, however, between property rights and property values. We're not talking about property values here. We're talking about property rights, which is somebody's ability to use or not use his or her property, not whether some decision could diminish or enhance the value of his or her property.
So the literal use.
It's the local rule that the city council adopted. If the city council wished to have everybody be able to appeal the Historic District Commission's decision, the city council can do that, but the city council hasn't done it. What the city council did was to allow three categories of people be able to appeal, as read by Desmond earlier. The project applicant, permetee, or other person whose property rights, not values, property rights, may be affected. So those are the three categories of people that can appeal. It's a jurisdictional issue. So everybody else who may wish to file an appeal, such as somebody outside this Historic District, may not even be qualified, may not have legal standing to appeal. That's the question. You, however, as the city council, can change the law, because this is a local rule. Tonight, you can also make a finding that Mr. Delp does have standing to bring his appeal if you're satisfied that his property rights are somehow affected, either positively or negatively, by the commission's decision, and that relates to his ability to use his property. And the question we ask is whether the commission's decision approving this structure, the demolish, would affect his ability to use, or not use, his property. Not regarding property value, but regarding his use of the property.
May I, I don't know if I'd be addressing that or not speak to that issue.
If you can provide some clarity to how your use of your property will be infringed, then yes.
I, the property that I own in Folsom, I own two parcels. One of them has a structure on it that was built in 1895. It has, I have tenants in that. I rent that. There are two other cabin structures on that property. They're not log cabins. I exercise my right as a citizen of Folsom to rely on Folsom Municipal Code and the protection and preservation of the Historic District values. As a property owner, that directly goes to my right to use and enjoy my property and to lease my property and to profit from my property. I have the right to do that and the right to do it with the protection of the Folsom Municipal Code that preserves the Historic District or is intended to preserve the Historic District in a way that's clearly outlined in the city law. And so I assert to you that I have the right to bring this to you with my concerns about the city council's or the Historic District Commission's decision that affects the quality of the Historic District, where my property is located, and I have the right to expect that the city will uphold its laws to protect my property and the Historic District.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'd like to kind of separate the two concepts right there, just for argument's sake. So, there's, and just once again to clarify, there isn't a provision in our code that is specific to protecting property value. Okay. And my experience in many, many communities looking for, visiting zoning boards of appeals and planning commissions is that they dismiss out of hand the discussion of property value. That can't be a purpose for getting a zoning exception, right? So that's not pertinent here per se, but it is a standard practice across many, many communities when you're talking about deviating from the code that is used for planning purposes. So those two things kind of go hand in hand. And then the second piece of what you said, which I tend to agree with, is that your reliance on the fair application of the zoning code is something that has some value relative to your enjoyment of your property, okay? I'll grant you that. But in this particular instance, the provisions of the code seem to be in favor of the demolition of this building, and there isn't a protection in place that really... I guess if you had a fear that the structures that you own, the city would demand that you demolish them, that would be different than what we're talking about tonight. Your, I mean, is that what we're talking about?
No, and I don't have that fear.
Okay.
My concern is that, I think it's exactly what you said. My concern is that, I think it's exactly what you said, is that my concern is that a decision hasn't, the code doesn't allow for the demolition of this structure with the current state of information and analysis that's been prepared for it. That's the whole crux of my appeal. That is what I hope we will discuss once we get beyond this important issue.
I don't have other questions. I just wanted to try and tease that out a little bit.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Borba?
No.
Vice Mayor Chalam Charla?
No.
So we need to answer the question, does Mr. Delp have standing to file an appeal?
That's the key question that the council has to answer first, and I do believe the applicant should be able to express her belief why Mr. Delp does not have standing.
Okay. So at this point, just to keep me honest, city attorney, can I have the-
Applicant.
Applicant. Yeah, come and speak. All right.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Jennifer Jennings. What you're addressing here is a fundamental standing issue for Mr. Delp. In his appeal, he should have alleged what property rights he thought were impacted. You have established the Historic District Commission to hear the details of these kinds of projects. He was at the Historic District Commission. He said nothing, and yet he wants to come here and appeal. And so those are, I find that fundamentally unfair, and he had that forum in which to discuss these details about the historic significance of this building. And for him just to use this appeal process contrary to what the code says to just get a second bite at the apple and really just simply inconvenience us as far as we're concerned is inappropriate, and I do not believe that he has, he can supplement his argument from what he stated in his written appeal. And I don't think what he said tonight indicates that there's any grounds for him to appeal.
Thank you.
I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you. Did you want to make a comment?
I would like to address that comment briefly. To the extent that this is, this question has anything to do with what I did or didn't speak to at the Historic District Commission meeting, I would like to make a few points on that. My wife and I both attended that meeting, and when we read the staff, I should speak for myself. When I read the staff report, the second paragraph on the first page of the staff report said, "The building was constructed in the 1950s."
Madam Mayor, I'm so sorry. I just want to make sure we focus on the question, not the appeal right now.
Okay.
The question of whether he has standing to even file this appeal.
Okay.
So if the question relates to my input at the Historic District Commission, my appeal is largely based on discussion that happened after the close of the public comment period about information that I had no ability to have any understanding of because it was presented incorrectly in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Delp. Okay, so then roll call.
Well, then, just for my clarification, just to be sure that we're fair to both sides, the appellant and also the project applicant, the question before the council right now, before moving to the appeal, is to determine whether the commission's decision to allow the applicant's structure to be demolished has some way, or is somehow affecting Mr. Delp's property rights, somehow affecting his ability to use and enjoy his property or do nothing at all. That's the question. And you'll have to make a decision. You'll have to vote on that, whether he has standing to file this appeal.
Okay.
I have one more clarifying question for the city attorney, if that's okay. So given that bar, what is, who has standing? A neighbor adjacent?
Not necessarily. So the person who can file, the persons who can file an appeal under this particular section of Municipal Code is a permit applicant, a permittee, or other persons whose property rights may be affected.
So that's more postured, that third category for somebody building something that may disturb your light or air or view or other-
Or impede upon your access.
Yeah, access, things like that. Okay. Okay, so that puts into, I'm sorry to belabor this, but it puts into question, you know, the appeal process that we have in place as it stands. With that set of restrictions, we've heard other appeals that perhaps this consideration should have been taken at the time. Maybe not, but it feels like that may be the case.
I don't know about the other appeals. All I know is that's what the city council, before this one, has decided to establish this local rule-
Right.
-to limit who may appeal its Historic District Commission's decision to the council. You can change that rule as you wish, but as of today, those are the rules that we follow. And Mr. Delp and also Ms. Jennings, everybody follows the same rule.
You're all staring at me now, too.
Mr. Adani-
It's nice to have an architect on the-
Based on the third option, Mr. Delp, he has a right to appeal based on his explanation.
That's what he's saying. Yes, sir. That's not what the applicant's saying.
Yeah. But the third option is vague in our city code.
Did you say vague, sir?
Yeah.
It's not vague to me, sir. There are three categories of individuals who may appeal.
Yeah.
A permit applicant, which is the applicant here.
Yeah.
A permittee, somebody who already has a permit, or an individual whose property rights may be affected by the decision. Not everybody under the sun.
So under that strict construct-
Yeah.
-it would appear that we don't have a valid appellant to this permit in this instance, so.
Well, not necessarily, sir. After hearing Mr. Delp and also the applicant, you sitting as judges, you decide. You can decide and find that Mr. Delp has standing to bring his appeal to you, or you can decide that he does not.
He made an argument against number three, that he, his property rights, wasn't that your argument? I mean, you're using number three as your argument to-
I don't have that code section in front of me, so.
Well, you're not a permit holder. You're not the permittee.
That's correct. I'm neither one of those.
And so it would be the third one, the individual whose property rights may be affected.
May be affected, yes.
And in what way would they be affected?
Because I'm a property owner in the city, and especially in the city in the Historic District, and the Folsom Municipal Code that provides provisions for the Historic District Commissions and the city council and staff's review, the city's review and approval of projects in the Historic District that affect the value and the quality of the Historic District, where I own property, where I benefit from the use of that property, decisions that are inconsistent with the protections provided by the Municipal Code affect my property in that way. If that seems not direct enough for this council, then you'll need to make that decision, that the citizens in the Historic District that are concerned about decisions made by the Historic District Commission and want to bring those to the city council, that they have a much higher bar than has been used in the past to be able to bring appeals. There was, I believe it was in 2019, an appeal of a resident appealing another residential structure that he had concerns with, that I'm confident was more than .2 miles from his property. This issue, to my knowledge, has never been raised, but I respect the Folsom Municipal Code, and I respect your ability to apply it and impose it. And if your decision is that I don't have standing based on the discussion that we're having here today, then you need to make that decision.
Bob, I have a question. So you believe that this structure, that the demolition of this structure is going to negatively impact your home?
I believe that the deterioration of the quality of the Historic District has a direct effect on my property, my property, my right to use and enjoy my property under the protection of the Folsom Municipal Code, and that if it's not properly implemented and enforced, that has a direct effect on my property and my property rights and rights to use my property.
All right, so the question at hand, does Mr. Delp have standing to file an appeal?
Mr. Delp, it is .2 miles from that location to your property?
Staff did the measurement. I see it on the slide. I didn't actually, a couple blocks away down.
Okay.
The applicant would like to make a comment, and then I think we'll come back and, I think voting? Do we just vote? Okay.
I mean, I think that Mr. Delp is certainly, again, adding to his argument, the appeal has a timeframe. It has to be submitted. It was submitted. It did not allege that his property rights were in any way being impacted. If you read it the way he is suggesting that you read it now, I could come and appeal any Historic District Commission decision I want, even though I currently live in Truckee. People in Orangeville could appeal any Historic District Commission decision. You have to have some basis of interest, and that's what this code says. If you want to change the code, that's fine. You could be more specific, but I think the way the code is currently written, he does not have standing.
Okay, thank you. I think we just do a roll call on it. All right, so will the clerk please call the roll and answer the question, does Mr. Delp have a standing to file an appeal?
Mr. Adani, one more time. The third option, you can explain one more time, the third option.
Certainly. Thank you, sir. So the third category-
The third category.
Individuals who may appeal Historic District Commission's decision about a project is a permit applicant, permittee, or other person whose property rights may be affected by the decision. And the decision tonight is the approval of a demolition, application of the applicant's property in the Historic District. So the question is whether demolishing this property will somehow affect Mr. Delp's property rights, his ability to use or not use his property. Thank you. So if the question before the council is whether Mr. Delp has standing, may I suggest refining that question? Maybe the question should be, Mr. Delp has standing and then vote, or Mr. Delp does not have standing and then vote, as opposed to each individual council member saying, yes, he has, or no, he does not.
Can I ask you a clarifying question? When you said property rights, and then you said to use or not use the property, I think property rights go beyond that, too, wouldn't you say?
Typically, it's use or not use, however you wish to deal with your, or dispose of your property, including remodeling, you know, your property, making addition to it-
Or selling or resell, okay.
Or renting it out. That's all within your rights. Nobody can question your ability because you're the legal owner. You have the legal right to do those things for yourself pertaining to your property. And hence, the question is, how is the commission's approval to allow this structure be demolished affect Mr. Delp's rights to use his property?
I just have one more question. Is this, are we talking about ish four blocks?
Four.
Four to five blocks?
Oh, distance, you mean, Madam Mayor? I do not know.
A distance from one home to the other?
The .2 miles was as the crow flies from the location of the cabin to Mr. Delp's home address.
Okay.
I have a question. Does this, is there a similar provision for the rest of Folsom outside of the Historic District Commission? Mr. Parryton is shaking his head, no.
I don't believe so. I think this is unique to the Historic District.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Meaning that the bar for appeals outside is lower or higher or silent? Sorry, I-
Yeah, what is the quandary?
The bar is lower outside the Historic District. It's basically anybody aggrieved by the action of the planning commission?
Aggrieved? Wow.
Yeah. Mr. Desmond, is the similar kind of structures were demolished in Historic District before, based on your past understanding? The similar cabin structures in the past was-
So I'd like to get, if you believe that Mr. Delp has standing, that I can discuss that more. That's kind of getting away from the topic of property, of property rights and standing, so.
So I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
Was that what you were gonna do? I'll make a motion that Mr. Bob Delp does have the right to appeal this project.
I second.
Okay, will the clerk please call?
Well, I want to, we can discuss some for a second. So I just want to acknowledge the applicant. I think she made some really good points. I think if Mr. Delp did not live in Folsom or not at all near this area, but I do, you know, I would have a different perspective on this, but you're very active in the Historic District. It shouldn't be about you individually, though, of course. It should be about the precedents we're making. And I think that's why I always want people's voices to be heard.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Borba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalam Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
No.
And Rodriguez?
No. Okay, so it's, yes, he does, and so now we proceed with the appeal. Okay.
So in terms of the background on what occurred, so the applicant, Ms. Jennings, submitted an application to demolish the cabin on February 4th of 2023. This matter was brought before the Historic District Commission and reviewed and approved at their May 3 meeting. The Historic District Commission, after discussion of this issue, directed staff to conduct additional research to determine whether the cabin was historic or of historic significance, and if so, do photo documentation of both the interior and the exterior prior to demolition. Mr. Delp submitted his appeal and was concerned with the following issues regarding insufficient information, and his belief that staff did not perform due diligence, and wanted the council to send this back to the Historic District Commission and for reconsideration with that additional information to be conducted by staff. So in terms of our response to the appeal, we did follow the code, the requirements of Folsom Municipal Code with regard to the demolition of historic structures. You know, I wanted to point out that in the future, if this is, if you believe this code section is insufficient, that's something that we can certainly change as part of the zoning code update, but we did follow the procedures that were in there at the time. We do acknowledge that there was a shortcoming with regard to the description about the age of the cabin in the report. It was talked about that the cabin was constructed in the 1950s. That was not correct. It was actually, as I'll talk about a bit, it was constructed between, sometime between 1904 and 1942. We have not been able, despite all the research that we've done, to be able to pinpoint the exact date that it was built. The applicant, Ms. Jennings, indicated that, based on her discussions with her father, the prior property owner, they believed that it was built sometime during the Depression. But again, the age of the structure is not known. None of the structures at that address are on the city's cultural resources list, and despite the cabin's age- And despite the cabin's age, there was no criteria that it met that would make it eligible for for listing on there. We also looked back in our records. There was a similar cabin and and home at 512 Percival Street, both of which were demolished. Those were approved unanimously by the Historic District Commission in 2002. And in that case, they did direct staff to photo document the the log cabin and the and the home prior to to demolition. And in Mr. Delp's appeal, there was a letter from a resident who was familiar with both the the log cabin at that site and the cabin also on on this property as well. So in it, in 2006, the the property owner did receive a notice and order to abate a public nuisance from the the city that came from the chief building official because of numerous building and fire code violations associated with it. They were ordered to vacate the the cabin and to remediate those. The cabin is significantly dilapidated and has been modified over time with a number of more modern materials, you know, newer roof, T-111 siding, partial foundation and and wainscoting. The cabin has also been damaged by animals trying to get into the cabin and in a couple instances of of homeless individuals trying to to get in. We, as directed by the Historic District Commission, we did do the additional research. We reached out to the Folsom History Museum. We reached out to the Historic Preservation League. We contacted the the Folsom Prison Museum because there was some concern about whether this or this might be associated with some cabins that might have been constructed at Folsom Prison and then relocated into the city. We looked at Sanborn maps, Rumsey maps, all of of that. And then we also went out to the site again and took photos of the exterior and the interior to to document that. This is the photos of the structure. You can see the oh, thank you. You can see see the the log cabin on this on this portion. But then you can you can also see the T-111 siding and the the kind of covered porch area that was that was added. And then you could see, you know, the condition of the windows. This is inside that covered porch area. And this is in the inside of the of the structure where it's got, you know, more either lath lath and plaster or drywall in this this area. So to conclude, staff respectfully request that the city council deny the appeal by Mr. Delp of the decision by the Historic District Commission approving the demolition of the shed structure at 608 at Bridge Street and is exempt from some SEQA. With that, I'll conclude my my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that the that the council has at the end of this, at the end of the of the of the appeal hearing.
Thank you, Desmond. Okay, we will now hear from the appellant. Yes, and you have a 10-minute time timeline.
Bob Delp, I'm the appellant in this matter. Good evening again. I know that I cannot ask the city attorney questions, and I don't expect him to give me advice, but I'm going to put this out to the council as a question and and then I'll move on. I'm not sure that I can get a fair hearing with two council members that just voted that I don't have standing to bring this to the council. So I don't, I would just ask the the two council members that voted against that to consider whether you feel that you have a conflict of interest now in hearing my appeal and judging this fairly. I'm not suggesting that you're not able to do that. I'm just asking you to self-assess and I'll assume you would recuse if you felt like you weren't able to. So I have some prepared remarks that I want to read and maybe a couple other items to touch on, but I'll try to make this brief. The Historic District Commission's approval allows destruction of one of the last remaining log cabins in the city without sufficient information to understand the cabin's potential contribution to Folsom's history. I'm asking that the city council reverse the commission's approval and direct staff or the applicant to retain a qualified historian to evaluate the historical significance of the log cabin. The question I'm asking you to consider is not, should the cabin be preserved? The question is, should the cabin be better understood before a decision is made to destroy it? My request isn't from left field, and it's consistent with other demolitions in the historic district when a structure has a reasonable potential to be historically significant. In 2019, Folsom resident Brian Martel was requesting permission to demolish a stone pump house as part of a remodel project. For that demolition request, E-Corp Consulting was retained to prepare a professional evaluation of the structure. E-Corp produced a brief but thorough review of the pump house, conducted research, photographed important elements, wrote descriptions of what the photograph showed, and documented in a professional letter report the details of the evaluation findings and conclusions of why the pump house did not warrant permanent preservation. Mr. Martel's remodel project ended up coming to the council on appeal due to community concerns. But with all of the community attention it received, none of that was associated with the pump house. The professional evaluation was appropriate and avoided concerns about the pump house demolition. Moreover, the professional documentation of the pump house now and will remain available as a comprehensive and complete document for future reference. For this project, this demolition, the additional information that staff assembled about the 608 Bridge Street property, since the commission's approval of the demolition, is interesting, and there is more information there, but it still does not provide sufficient insight on the history of the log cabin itself. Staff staff's attempt at an evaluation of the log cabin's historical significance results in staff's, with all respect, unqualified determination and an actual mistakenly used criteria for determining eligibility for listing. The criteria that was used by staff is the eligibility criteria for the National Register, but they didn't use the city's Historic Preservation Master Plan criteria. The criteria are similar, but there are important and distinct differences. I'd be glad to discuss those more, and I'd point those out to to Desmond and give him an opportunity to tell me that I'm looking at something incorrect, but the two criteria are different and, like I say, in important material respects. Until 2002, the 608 Bridge Street log cabin may not have been one of a kind. The record indicates that until 2002, there was another nearby log cabin that may have been similar. But that log cabin was demolished. And if the black and white images of that cabin in your staff report represents what's left of that cabin's legacy, important information about that cabin has already been lost forever. Details of the 608 Bridge Street cabin, construction methods, and materials have not been assessed or recorded. And the photographs in your staff report are neither narrated nor sub nor suitable for understanding the log cabin's structural details. The brick foundation and base of the structure was mischaracterized by staff as brick wainscoting. And no information is documented in the record about the brick or mortar types used for the foundation or any other foundation details. Similarly, the type and the age of the chink, which is the mortar between the logs, has not been identified and could likely be easily determined, could likely be easily assessed by a qualified professional. Some sections of the cabin reveal construction techniques involving the use of wire mesh and square nails. These construction details and a better understanding of them would lead to at least some understanding of the cabin's age, construction methods, its historic qualities, and they need to be professionally assessed and recorded, or this information's going to be lost forever. The cabin is, it's in pretty bad shape. I get it. I understand. It can be hard to maintain properties in this. But the the poor condition of the cabin is not a reason to say, let's just tear it down. I have no problem with demolishing or removing the add-on piece that's there without additional review. But the cabin itself, and if you look at the photos and the way the logs are interlaid and the way the foundation bricks are laid, there's more to know about that cabin. Someone could figure out if it had been moved there and placed there or if it was built there. I'm confident that it wouldn't take, that 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 experienced professional could figure this out. An experienced professional has not been engaged in this, hasn't looked at the cabin. We're going to lose it if you don't put the brakes on this and let a little bit more analysis be done before a decision to demolish it forever is taken. Thank you.
And Bob, just to answer your question, while I may not, while I may have voted no on having a standing, I do, my personally, I am very open and objective going into this hearing. I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, and I, and yes, I appreciate that.
Okay, so now we will hear from the applicant.
Thank you. Again, my name is Jennifer Jennings, and along with my husband, Michael Bledsoe, we own the property known in the city records as 608 Bridge Street. It consists of two and a half lots with five small houses and the building at issue in in this evening's proceeding, the little cabin. I hope you had an opportunity to read my, our letter, which was submitted. It was at the very end of that very long packet regarding this issue. It has a lot more detail. I wanted to summarize because I know it's late. My husband and I currently live in Truckee, but I have a longstanding history with Folsom. I lived, I grew up in Orangeville. We went to church at St. John the Baptist, and I was in the first graduating class at Notre Dame Elementary School. My father worked at Aerojet, and he bought rental properties in the area and worked on them during the weekends. As he aged, he started selling them, and my husband and I bought this small collection of small modest houses along with that cabin. We bought them in 2007, and in 2006, he had converted the cabin into a storage facility because he had been told by the city that they did not think it was habitable. And the city police had been having some trouble with the tenant that had was had been occupying that property, so he removed the kitchen and bathroom before we purchased the property. When we purchased the property, we looked and saw whether we could rehab the property or the cabin because we we are, we love historical buildings. But we determined that we could not realistically rehab it. We contacted the city staff about the building a number of times, trying to assess what the age of it was. They were the, we actually got the notice, the 2006 notice about vacating the property from the city staff. I asked a lot about the history because I didn't understand why, frankly, that whole area south of Natomo was in the historic district because it doesn't seem very historic to me, at least. And I finally figured out that it was because it was just the original, it was in the area that was originally platted out, the subdivision of Folsom, the original 1855 subdivision. So it was named historic because of that, even though the buildout of that area was was much, much later. So I appreciate the desire to know more about the age, but I think the staff has determined, based on the maps that they have reviewed, that it was built sometime between 1904 and based on the letter that Mr. Delp referred to, 1942. We never suggested to anybody that was built in the 1950s. We assumed it was built at an earlier time. I have a lot of comments about Mr. Delp's lack of standing, and I still firmly believe that if you're going to interpret it that way, then you need to change the municipal code to reflect that. If you decide to rule on the merits which you have, I don't think I need to report what the staff has already reported. The structure is not historically significant. Mr. Delp and his appeal letter, which he certainly expanded upon the appeal letter tonight, but he faulted us for not wanting a continuance of this issue at the Historic District Commission meeting. And the reason for that is because the Historic District Commission meets pretty infrequently. And we applied for this permit early February. But the Historic District Commission considered the issue in a lengthy meeting, and we urge you to honor and respect their decision. They are the experts. They're the people that you asked to really review these matters. You sat through a whole bunch of stuff about traffic, and you have a lot of other issues on your plate. And when you delegate to a different body, I think you need to respect the decisions that they come to. We believe that demolishing the structure or replacing it with an accessory dwelling unit would be in the best interests of the city. We rent our small modest houses at a reasonable rate, and when we recently had a vacancy, we had over 100 people express an interest in 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 renting the property. And frankly, it was pretty distressing to hear the stories of all the people who desperately wanted to live in that area so they would be closer to work, so they would be close to school and the other issues that people have with, that have lower incomes and are seeking housing in in Folsom. So please deny Mr. Delp's appeal and allow us to move forward with helping Folsom address its housing shortage. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Jennifer. At this point, we're going to open up for members of the public to address the council. Are there any requests to speak?
I have three requests, Loretta Hedinger, then Beth Kelly, then Terri Sorensen.
Okay. Loretta, you want to come on up?
I may need an extra 10 seconds. I don't know how fast I can talk tonight. For the sake of everybody involved, council, commission, staff, citizens, and perhaps most of all, future applicants, how could this whole problem have been prevented? It could have been. For starters, it should have been addressed 17 years ago, if not 22, when its condition first came to the city's attention. The building official assessed safety only, and none of the people CC'd on his notice were knowledgeable about historic properties. I know them. However, I would have thought that the fact of it being a log cabin would have been enough for someone to realize its potential significance, not their job. So it's been deteriorating ever since. Fast forward to today, nothing I say now is implying that your planners are incompetent. It is so unfair of this city to make them work outside their area of expertise. They were influenced by the uninhabitable condition of the cabin. The applicants wished to build a housing unit addressing the statewide issue and the city's inability to say no. They rushed to judgment, and tonight is the result. What should have happened? When the applicant first came in with this proposal, she should have been alerted to the potential significance and been required to research the building's history. The museum is a phone call away. She should also have been required to have a contractor knowledgeable in historic construction assess the building for its value in terms of methods and materials. If the city no longer requires applicants to provide historic justification for what they plan to do, then the city needs to do it. Instead, what happened was that even the most basic research was omitted. And yet, the Historic District Commission staff report asserted twice that the building is, quote, "not considered significant and contains no historically significant materials." Based on what? They never gave a reason, just a bare conclusion. That conclusion is not supported by facts. The museum was a phone call away. Also, staff knowledgeable in historic properties would have known that current condition does not mean a building lacks historic value. Staff blames the code for lack of guidance redemolition. Codes can always be improved, even ones I wrote. But what the code does say needs to be adhered to. There are two missing pieces in adherence when it went to the Historic District Commission. Because of the appeal, staff has now done research on its history. What staff has not done is assess the methods and materials of construction. Because staff does not know what to look for, the many photos taken do not correctly document the building.
I'll need to wrap it up soon, Loretta.
I'll I'll be as quick as I can. I certainly hope you do, you will listen, if not to bleep, into the museum's historian and have a qualified professional assess and correctly document the historic methods and materials of construction before allowing demolition. If it is to be demolished, those materials need to be made available to others, perhaps to repair any remaining log cabin in town for possible use at Pioneer Village or the Railroad Y, or at least given to Habitat for Humanity. Please do the right thing by history.
Thank you, Loretta.
Next speaker, Beth Kelly.
President of the Heritage Preservation League. Just wanted to make a quick comment about the standing. I think this strict interpretation of this standing issue is really going to have a chilling effect on all Historic District residents or property owners in the, even the commercial owners who want to disagree with the Historic District Commission. I just think that's a really scary thing to interpret it quite so strictly. The decision at the HDC meeting to permit the demolition, when there was so much discussion about whether the cabin was historically significant, seemed biased. The HDC clearly didn't have enough information and relied on staff's assertion that the structure was not historically significant and contains no historically significant building materials, which was incorrect. Even a preliminary cursory view reviews, reveals square nails, brick foundations, not wainscoting, siding applied over log walls, not replacing the log wall. And a log cabin that still exists is rare. A history professional or archaeologist could provide a better evaluation. Anyone versed in history should know that a log cabin should have been researched for its previous ownerships and construction materials and methods. And then to request the Heritage Preservation League to do the research within a week, per the email from the city staff, seems unreasonable. Now that we have seen the history museums easily obtained information about the cabin, we are convinced that this cabin is significant from a Folsom history perspective, and more research should still be done. Actually, it should have been researched back in 2006 or earlier, when there might have been more people that remembered the history of these few cabins. Was anyone at city staff interested in when these cabins appeared and how they were used? Apparently, it could have been remediated in 2006, or at least saved and moved somewhere else. And not every historical feature in the historic district has been captured in the cultural resources inventory. That inventory was just a preliminary start to a list, and there doesn't seem to be too many efforts to add to it. We have designated, we have a designated historic district for a reason, and it is slowly being eroded under the excuse of better economic development and housing needs. We are seeing a loss of historic character on Sutter Street and in the residential neighborhood, where instead of log cabins and historic houses, we're tilting toward massive, prominently visible accessory dwelling units with three-car garages. How historic are these? Heritage Preservation League recommends that the city approve the appeal, override the HDC decision, and provide at a minimum the latest research to give the HDC the chance to properly determine the course of action, or suggest a plan for further research and better documentation with more details than the photos provided in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Last speaker is Teri Sorenson.
Try to be real brief. The arguments that have been presented against the demolition, I'm in, I would agree with those. But the reason I really, one of the reasons I came here tonight was not to get to the issues of, you know, when's a cabin, a good cabin to preserve or not to preserve. I came here because I looked on the, on the agenda, and I saw Bob Delp was going to speak. The guy's brilliant. He cares. He researches these things. He's got good points to make. That's about all I can say. His interest is in observing Folsom's history and to follow the laws, to follow the procedures, and that's what the man does. He does it consistency, he does it consistently. And whenever I look on the agenda and see that he's going to speak, I'll be here to back him up. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, next we will now proceed to the applicant to make a five-minute closing remark.
I sat back there by Mr. Sorenson and for three and a half hours tonight, and he didn't say much to me at all, and I thought, he must be kind of annoyed by me or upset with me, and I, and then he stands up here and he reads the remarks that I prepared for him, just like, right to cue. I don't have much else to say. I, I think, I do want to say how important I think the Heritage Preservation League of Folsom is to Folsom's historic district. I think if you don't listen to me, I think, listen to Loretta and Beth. They, they really do care about this historic district. I've learned a ton from them, and I, they want the best for the district. No one is, no one that I've heard, uh, talked to about this situation has suggested that the cabin needs to stay where it is. It's about, let's understand what it is before we get rid of it or do something else with it. So I would hope that you keep that in mind and maybe give this a little bit more time and analysis before a decision's made. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we will now move along to the project applicant.
I would just like to restate my objection to the council hearing it. And then further, I don't think there's been any evidence that this is, that this cabin was constructed prior to 1902. I know that there's been a lot of work. I went down some of the alleys. I used to hang out on some of the streets here, had a lot of friends, and there's been a lot of changes in the historic district, including by some people that appear before you today. And I think that, you know, there's, I, I don't expect that there would be any additional information available. I do think that your staff did a, a good job, especially after the Historic District Commission's direction to try to document when this was constructed. And there isn't really much, except to say that it wasn't, it did not appear on the maps in 1902. And further, there is nothing special about, there's no association with anybody that was important in Folsom's history with regard to this. And I, if anybody here in the audience or elsewhere has an interest in moving it, we'd be happy to have that happen.
That, that's what I was going to ask, actually, before we went to questions, is, is, it appears as, it sounds as though this log cabin may be, it may be of interest to the History Museum or to someone else. Are you willing for them to come and take it?
Oh, absolutely. 100%. We'd contribute some money. I mean, you know, but I don't think it, it doesn't seem very movable to me. I mean, I think it would be hugely expensive. And this has been going on now for a while. The, the, the Preservation League and the others, they received, like I said, we, we filed our permit application in February. I think that, according to the staff, they sent out the notice in February 23rd. The Historic District Commission meeting was May, in May. And so people have had a lot of time to contact us. I've never heard from staff that anybody contacted staff and was interested in doing anything with this. So, but we would be very happy to move this property, because it's not in a location where it's of any value for tourists to see a log cabin. And frankly, maybe it's just because I live in Truckee now, log cabins aren't that unusual. And just because something's built with logs doesn't mean that it's special.
With regard to the follow-on project that you're planning, what's the time sensitivity to when the log cabin needs to be out of the way?
Well, we had hoped, we had hoped, we had contacted some people who build accessory dwelling units, and we'd hoped that we would be able to get that started this summer, but we've kind of given up on that. We had, we lost our demolition contract, which we had done, you know, tentatively, we'd entered into. We lost that with the commission not meeting, and then this appeal, and so, but, I mean, realistically, I don't think we're going to get to it until next summer. But I would certainly hope that I could make a commitment, but I would certainly hope that you would still deny the appeal, because I do think the Historic District Commission considered all of these, all of these issues. And I don't think there's anything of, I, I don't think you're going to be able to find anything in the cabin that would get you a, a stronger definition of, of when it was built. We just, I think, pretty conclusively know it was post-1902. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll now turn it over to city staff, applicant, project application. Are there any questions for anyone from the council?
I have a question for Desmond. I, I know it's in the staff report, but just, can you summarize? You did, staff did call the Folsom History Museum per the direction of the Historic District Commission, and could you just please summarize what you learned from them?
Yeah, so we reached out to them, and the information that they provided was, you know, again, referencing the, the correspondence that had been received associated with the 512, the demolition of the cabinet at 512 Percifer. In addition to that, there was speculation about whether the cabin might have been something at the, the Folsom prison. So we looked into that and contacted staff at the Folsom Prison Museum. They then sent us photographs and said that they, that this was not one, a, a cabin that had been constructed on the prison site and relocated, which was one of the issues. The, you know, they, they did provide some general history about the area, but not specifically about the, the cabin i- itself. There was some speculation as to what it might have been used for, but there was no, nothing in terms of evidence that they provided to support those, those, those concepts. So we were kind of, at the end of the day, we were still kind of left with the same information that, okay, it was just constructed sometime between 1904 and 1942. And it's, you know, it, it did not, you know, based on the property owner history of who owned that site, it didn't seem to be, didn't appear to be connected to anybody of significance in, in Folsom's history or a particular significant event, other than the fact, as the applicant stated, that it may have been constructed during the Great Depression. So that's, you know, I, I know Ms. Kelly referenced that there was information that she was aware of from the Folsom History Museum that identified the significance of If that's the case, I don't believe that we received that, because it, that was not the information we provide, we received from Rhodey Lee and the, I'm blanking on her name, the other, the other woman that, you know, they did the archive search for us. And, you know, we appreciated them doing that, but there wasn't anything that could either pinpoint the, the date of the cabin, or, or what the purpose of the construction of the cabin was, or whether it was tied to an individual associated with, you know, important events in, in Folsom's history.
Mr. Desmond, I think you already made that point. When we were originally submitting and explaining to Historic District Commission, and what was the year we put for this cabin?
So the, the error that was made was staff looked at historical aerials, and the historic aerials that we had access to only went back to around, around 1957. So we knew it had existed at, at, at that point. Staff incorrectly stated that the cabin was, you know, built in the 1950s, which was not correct. The, the cabin, as I stated earlier, we believed it, you know, sometime between, prior to 1942, based on the, the letter from, that was in the, the staff report, well, it was included in Mr. Delp's appeal, and it was in the staff report for the 512 Percifer demolition. And then, and then the Rumsey maps, which we looked at, which are the historic maps of, of Folsom, there was, nothing was shown in this area at that time. Doesn't mean it, you know, for certain that there was nothing here, but at least based on the regulation, recollections from Mr. Rumsey, nothing was identified or, or in, in the map of that era. And then we checked the Sanborn maps, which go back even further. Unfortunately, they cut off around Mormon Street. They don't go this far south. So there was nothing that we could glean from, from that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or entertain a motion? Oh, no, no, sorry. Let me close the public hearing. If, if we're all good. Okay, so the public, public hearing is now closed, so that we can deliberate and make a decision.
Well, I will move to deny the appeal.
May I add a caveat to that? Is to, is for the applicant to donate the log cabin to either the History Museum or to anyone who may be interested to come and pick it up?
Does that need to be part of a motion?
Yes, ma'am, that would be, meaning this additional requirement would be made part of the condition of approval. You can do so, if that's what you want to do.
Do we know anybody wants to receive it?
Yeah. So, Mr. City Attorney, if we put that as a part of motion, then she can demolish that.
Yes, sir.
She has to find somebody, somewhere, to move.
Yeah, the only fair thing to do would be to ask for some time accommodation.
Yeah.
If somebody comes forward and wants to remove it for you, that you not do that preemptively. So if you're remenable to that, I think that would be a fair amendment.
Fair. What would you say, like a month?
Please don't demolish it for 90 days or something.
I'm okay with that, if the applicant is okay with that.
And no is a valid answer, I just.
I, I, 30 days would be preferable. I mean, to me, it's, we do want to.
30 days is fair.
Yeah. And who do you want us to contact as far as?
I don't want you to contact anybody.
Okay.
If somebody wants to take it off your hands, we want to give that window for them to.
Okay, so they will contact staff, and staff will contact me. Okay, that's acceptable.
Could I ask the city attorney a question also? Just speculating here, if this appeal is denied and the city is sued, does it make sense to put a condition of approval that has to do with tolling so that the, this doesn't mess up the appeals, you know, that the?
I understand what you're saying, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
It's getting late. Yeah, we can certainly do that, and I think Desmond may have a proposed condition of approval amendment. It relates to condition of approval number three, I believe, and Desmond can explain that.
Okay.
So this was the original conditions as part of the Historic District Commission approval. This would be a proposed addition to condition number, number three. So the, the original condition read, "The project approval granted under this staff report shall remain in effect for two years from the final date of approval, May 3, 2025. Failure to, to obtain the relevant demolition permit within this time, without the subsequent extension of this approval, shall result in the termination of this approval." So that, that was the original condition. We would recommend adding, "If a lawsuit is filed against the city which seeks to invalidate the approval or the permit required in connection with the approval, or to challenge the issuance by any governmental agency of an environmental document or, or an exemption determination, the project approval shall be..." document or, or an exemption determination, the project approval shall be told during the time that any litigation is pending, including any appeals."
Okay, thank you.
And I could provide that to the clerk.
I'm going to restate my motion. I'm going to move that we deny the appeal, however, that the applicant does not demolish the building for 30 days, to give time for somebody to come forward if they should want to take it off their hands, and to amend condition number three as just read by Desmond.
I'll second that.
You have a motion in a second? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Is there any other deliberation?
I have a question. It might be for you, Steve. So do we have to put, I don't want this to be at the cost of the applicant. So as long as she's not putting any roadblocks, it's not her responsibility to pay for any part of it, and 30 days is 30 days, so she's not contacted, or it's not, is it not moved by 30 days? I want to be able to give the leeway to.
Thank you, ma'am. And we certainly want to be reasonable and, and be considerate to the applicant's timeframe. You can certainly put those details in the motion as well. You can ask for friendly, friendly amendment to impose those additional requirements that it will be at no cost to the applicant, and it has to be moved within 30 days, if that's what you wish.
I mean, is that already implied in the motion?
That was my understanding, but you can make it clearer just like.
We'll just clear it up, that it has to be moved unless there's a consideration the applicant wants to make by 30 days, at the expense of whoever wants to move it.
Okay, so you have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Rohrbach.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalam Charla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Okay, will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is council request for future agenda items.
I have one thing. This was a request from a resident via Facebook. Chapter 7.04.080 of the Folsom Municipal Code talks about restrictions in keeping certain livestock and other animals, and includes not more than any combination of two chickens, ducks, pigeons, and/or rabbits shall be kept as pets, yada, yada, yada. Just suggested that maybe that's a little bit outdated in this day and age, and apparently chickens and rabbits are very social animals, and maybe two is more than appropriate, but more than two is appropriate. So anyway, this is not a pressing item. I would just say, maybe by the end of the calendar year, if this could come back for review, that would be.
Absolutely, no problem.
Thank you.
Just a quick, if I can just address that question. Will, that'll be part of the zoning code update, and that's already on our list, so my preference would be not to bring it back as a separate item.
Got it, thank you. I will relay that to the resident, thank you.
All right, any other?
I have one that's pertinent to tonight. We should probably revisit our options vis a vis who is, who has standing for appeals throughout the city, so that we have a consistent set of rules that apply reasonably.
We can do that.
Thank you.
I, I second, yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is city manager's report.
Thank you. Following one of California's wettest winters, the city of Folsom has ended its water conservation, water warning stage three effective June 19th, and this change aligns with the governor lifting the state's drought restrictions. Please be mindful that all Californians are still prohibited from using potable water to wash sidewalks and driveways, allowing runoff when watering with potable water, using hoses with no shut-off nozzles to wash cars, watering outdoors during and within 48 hours following measurable rainfall. And you can find out more at our website at folsom.ca.us/waterconservation. As was referenced in the workshop earlier tonight, a traffic safety improvement project at Folsom Lake Crossing in East Nataoma is set to begin tomorrow, June 14th. The project is designed to improve safety, reduce accidents and fatalities, and increase mobility in the, in the corridor by applying a rubberized friction surface treatment to the roadway, installing 2,150 feet of metal beam median barriers, radar speed feedback signs, and updated pavement markers and signage. Construction is scheduled to take place from 8:00 to 3:30 p.m. on June 19th and 20th, with work beginning at 4:00 a.m. And any questions, you can reach out to Ryan Chance in Public Works at rchance@folsom.ca.us. The 10th Annual Community Service Day takes place on Saturday, September 16th. And if you have a great idea for a community service day project, your deadline is June 30th to submit that. A variety of sponsorship opportunities are available to help and find out more at folsomcommunitieservice.org. And finally, Mr. Wong, our city attorney, is back with us briefly as he continues a deployment with the U.S. Army, and I just wanted to thank him for his service, and he'll return to us again in July safely.
Thank you. Councilmember Rohrbach.
I have two things, and the last thing was going to be, thank you again, Mr. Wong, Steve, for your service as well. It's nice to see your face back here, but I really appreciate what you do for our country. I had the great experience of being able to visit, go behind underneath and in it, Folsom Dam and the spillway. It was an incredible experience to go on top and see the view. We saw a pontoon boat get too close, and they were yelling, so that was cool, super fun. But really going deep into, underneath the dam was so cool, and just to be so up, up close and personal, and really just learning about the history and everything. And the offer is put out there to the rest of the council if they want to go and tour the dam themselves. But I just want to say, thank you to the Sheriff Department and Dave Lee for taking myself and my husband, whose company built part of it, around. It was a great privilege, so.
All right. Vice Mayor Chalam Charla.
Thank you, mayor. Joint commission meeting tonight with the Transportation Commission and the city and the consensus from the residents. I just want to thank Mark and your team and that extra mile you went to get the chimney horn, to get all those aerial views. It is more clear, and the residents are on board. And no, it has been last four years, back and forth, back and forth. And I did hear the resident coming and that group speaking that they are pleased with your action and the decision we are moving forward. Thank you. With that, no special things, and good night, Folsom.
Thank you. Councilmember Aquino?
It's late, no report.
All right. Councilmember Kozlowski?
Get your tickets for the rodeo, they run out fast.
All right. All right, so here's my opportunity. So earlier in business on the floor, Sergeant Grunberg, police officer for Folsom, shared some concerns he had about some comments that I made at our last meeting. He did mention some stats that we received, but I have no updated stats, I want to make that clear. Secondly, the word miniscule in terms of homelessness, and that he, I, I believe he thinks I made my determination of our homelessness in Folsom based on a four-hour ride along for, with him in February. And, and he wanted me to reconsider my stance on this matter. So here's an opportunity for me to share. One, I don't know if I'm surprised, shocked, sad, or hurt that I have open office hours, Tuesdays, Thursdays. If anybody calls me and says, "I can only meet with you at 5:00 a.m. on Saturday morning," I will be wherever it needs to be at 5:00 a.m. I will, I, I meet with people, I make myself available. And so I feel like if there was a concern that was made from a comment that I made, that somebody would have come to see me. I'm the kind of person that if there's a problem, I will go to the person and try to make an attempt to meet with them and sit down with them and talk about things. And so I kind of always just assumed that people will have that sort of reciprocal approach to having problems. And so I, I now have, I just want to share a little bit about my experience on homelessness. So I was elected to the Folsom City Council in November of 2020. One of the first questions that I asked at that time, Mayor Kozlowski, was, "I would like to have the homeless coun, the Sacramento County Homeless Council," and his response to me is, "I don't think anyone's going to argue you for that." I said, "Okay, great." So I went ahead and started immediately getting involved in homelessness because I have, have had exposure in history in the past. I care about the city that I live in. I'm a business owner in an area that can oftentimes be impacted by homelessness and transients. And so from the very beginning, the, one of the first things I did was get a ride along at that time with Sergeant Zalaya. And I have, since then, if I were to guesstimate how many hours I've been on ride alongs in the past two and a half years, I'm probably going to say somewhere between 40 to 50 hours between ride alongs with Sergeant Zalaya, Officer Jones, and then with Grunberg in February. And so I, I feel like my exposure to what the city looked like in early 2021 was, the conditions were, were pretty poor. And we had, I mean, I think we're coming out of a pandemic, and, and at that point, it was, let's get some work into the cleanup that is done in, in, in the open spaces. And so started with that. And then I met with every single nonprofit for the city, with the city of Folsom. Every single nonprofit that is associated to homelessness, I sat down with. One of the first things I identified is that we, there was no communication amongst these nonprofits. And so we got together at Starbucks on Riley and Wales, and I even took a picture of us that day because it was such an incredible conversation that we had. And it was Sergeant Zalaya, it was Jake's Not, Jake's Journey Home, two volunteers from our community, and the, and the navigator that we had at the time. And one of the things that was the big aha moment at that time was that, that we, there wasn't any communication amongst the nonprofits, PD, and there was a lot of duplicate efforts that were made. And so we started meeting for coffee. At that time, I reached out to a former colleague of mine who was a black belt in Lean Six Sigma, and said, "Hey," she had just retired, and I said, "You're so good at, 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 at taking us through projects," et cetera. This is a former colleague of mine at Cetera Health. And I said, "Would you be interested in doing some work for us to be able to help us understand the impact of homelessness in the city of Folsom?" Now, mind you, she's a black belt, Lean Six Sigma, experienced, and she said to me, "Rosario, I would be more than happy to help you through that process." In the June of 2021, there were about, I don't know, I want to say maybe nine, 10, 11 of us, from powerhouse Jake's Journey Home, from the two volunteers that were in the community, Sergeant Zalaya, the Folsom Navigator, Heart of Folsom, and the Sacramento County Behavioral Health. All of us came together for three days. We spent almost six to seven hours each day. We looked at, we looked at our current state of homelessness, and what, we looked at our current state, future state, we looked at problem areas, we looked at barriers. We spent almost 18 hours sitting together formulating what the plan would look like to be able to tackle Folsom's homelessness. At that time, from that meeting, because all of these nonprofits work so separately, we just, we formulated the Folsom Alliance for the Unhoused. Since then, this group has met every single month, up to most recently, because of the impact, now they're meeting bimonthly. So at that point, we were able to, I mean, there was a lot of good collaboration, a lot of really good communication that took place. Let me tell you what else here. So one of the things that I am, I, so I'm not, I, I tell people all the time, I am native of San Francisco. I saw San Francisco fall apart in the, in the, in the 80s with the opioid epidemic and the impact that it had. My perspective on homelessness is, I, I have, I feel like I have such a great perspective of what homelessness is, not only in Northern California, but in the city of San Francisco, and then what, what I've seen in the past eight years. I, I've been a, I've been in the Historic District now for eight years with construction and so on, could be about eight and a half. I have, I, I do comparison to the city of Rancho Cordova, Citrus Heights, Roseville. Sergeant Grunberg, Ron Perry, who is a Folsom Police Officer Chaplain, and then Jeannie from Jake's Journey Home and myself took a trip to the Gathering Inn, what might have been around March-ish. And, and even in, in driving into the Gathering Inn and checking out their program, you can see the impact of homelessness that was in Roseville. You, one has to understand the impact that, that just in our surrounding cities have. Rancho, Citrus Heights, Roseville, and El Dorado County, and Sacramento. Sacramento is, is, is its own beast, it has its own issues, and, and they are pretty significant. And so when I, when I, when I say that I wish Grunberg had come to me, it would have been, because I would have then been able to explain to him. I also sit on the Sacramento County Homeless Council. We meet four times a year. I was a part of a strategic plan that took place on how they were going to tackle homelessness with the Sacramento County. So I feel that my knowledge of homelessness in, in our area is, is pretty good. I also want to share with you some numbers that I think are really important. The pig count in November of 2022, and I'm just going to go through all of them. City Sacramento has, has 67% of the homeless impact, with the American River Parkway having about 8%. Citrus Heights, 1%, Rancho Cordova, 2%, Elk Grove, 1%, Folsom, .5, .05%. And the unincorporated county of Sacramento has 20%. So when I received this, I didn't believe it. And that's what triggered me to say, "Sergeant Grunberg, can I go on a ride along with you?" Because I didn't believe this. I thought those numbers have to be way off. So we went on a ride along. I invited Jeannie from Jake's Journey Home to join us, and one of the questions at the very end of the ride along on that day was, "Sergeant Grunberg, what is your, what do you think is the number of people that we have that are unhoused, living in our open spaces?" And his response to me was, "20 to 30." And I thought, wow, that's surprising, because that's what the pig count was showing, 20. Let's just assume 30, maybe 40. And so, so I, I, I felt like, okay, I have a perspective, so maybe it was, maybe it was just the wording that was used when I say miniscule, but the reality is that even when you look at the pig count numbers from Sacramento County, a .05, that means that, it showed 20. 20 out of 6,664 in the county, to me, is where I get the miniscule. And so, you know, I, I apologize if I undermined some of the hard work that happens. Now, I can tell you that the condition of the city of Folsom is really good when it comes to unhoused individuals, when you, but it, but it's because of the collaboration that has taken place. It's because we have an incredible PD that I've always said has been an incredible part of giving us a great quality of life. We also have nonprofits that have a genuine interest in seeing the issue happen. They're good about tackling, they're good about, hey, you know what, there's this individual on the street, okay, so they will go and they'll meet the person, talk to them, they build relationships, and the goal is to ultimately get people into services. Our nonprofits have done an incredible job of getting people into services, but when someone says they don't want the help, they, they, there's nothing we can do. We are bound to the Boise versus Martin decisions. There are many restrictions on what we can do, but what I appreciate of our nonprofits and our police department and, and, and the, you know, the behavioral health, is that they are relationships that get built, that then people trust, and, and they help them getting into services. So, you know, I, I, I would have loved, maybe I didn't do a good job of selling my experience to, you know, Sergeant Grunberg. I apologize if I felt, if you felt insulted on my comments. They definitely were not intended to be dismissive of the work that you do. I, I'm a believer that our community crime suppression unit does a really good job with two people. Most recently, I had asked for data on phone calls that were made, and because I was curious to know about the impact of, of phone calls, and Chief Hillbin responded with the information. This is what I got since November 1, 2022, through last week, and this is June 6. The police department has handled 22,573 calls for service. Of those incidences, 1,275 involved individuals without a permanent address. Of the 1,275 incidences, 240 different individuals were identified as unhoused. If you were to combine the 1275 and the 240, it is about, you know, 6% of calls that were made for calls for service. And so I, again, I just want to say that I apologize that there was, that my comment was taken wrong, but I am a believer that this is something that could have been handled, maybe sitting together over coffee and letting me know, "Hey, I don't like what you said," so that I could have explained what my experience has been working with the unhoused. I'm not going to stop working with it because I, I, I think that the city has done a really great job of handling and managing the problem. Are we going to? Are we going to see increases throughout the year? Yes, it happens. I, I have, having a business in the part of town where it's, where I think maybe even most impacted, is that we do see transients. We see people with, with mental health issues that will come up here, that will cause problems, and, 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 but that's, this is California. California has incredibly, has policies that don't allow us to be able to help people get into, into services. And so I'm sorry I've taken so long to explain that, but I, I, I do have a very good insight into the homeless issue in Sacramento County. I have, I feel like I have a, a pretty darn good insight into the impact with the city of Folsom, and, and to Officer Jones and to Sergeant Grunberg, you guys do an exceptional job with what you do. And with that, I will close the meeting at 11:43 p.m.